Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This city council meeting, Monday, February the first, two thousand sixteen, at seven P.M. Ms. Derry, would you call the row, please?
Thank you, Brown. Lee Johnson?
Here.
Brownout?
Here.
David Daniel?
Here.
Tim Terry?
Here.
Yes, Terry.
Thank you, Ms. Derry. If you please rise, and we will have our prayer. We play by Mr. Richard McCall by our pledge of allegiance by Chief Willie Dawson.
Good morning, and prayer. Heavenly Father, we pause at this time to thank you for the abundant blessings that you receive. We thank you for life, your creation, and the measure of health that allows us to fulfill our colleagues, our friendship, and our families. We thank you, Lord, for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the honor in bearing appropriate responsibilities. We thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy in this great nation. We read the scriptures where we pray and respect those in positions of authority. Therefore, tonight, we pray for our mayor, our city, and for these elected officials that are assembled here. Please grant them wisdom to govern amid conflicting interests and issues. Grant them a sense of welfare and truth to our people. Give them a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, and competence in what is good and fitting. And Bo-Bo will grant them the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. Please give them the strength to make decisions tonight as they address these items on this agenda, and to benefit those who live in or in this area.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Seaver. At this time, I would ask the council to look at and seek approval of the minutes for January fourth council meeting, and also the January fourteenth special call, city council meeting. I'll make the motion, Mr. Perry, to approve those minutes. Make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
David Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Brownout?
Yes.
David Daniel?
Here.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Lance Terry?
Thank you. We will move down the line of the agenda to the recognition and acknowledgements this evening. And very special acknowledgements, as all acknowledgements are special. If Chief Dawson would step forward, please. I'm gonna check my pocket for bullets. I don't have one, so. This is a certificate of appreciation awarded to William Dawson for fifteen years of service with the City of Brooklyn Police Department, awarded this first day of February two thousand sixteen by Mayor and City Clerk Charlotte Derrick. Congratulations, Chief. Attention. Thank you. Says it's only still like it's four or five years. We do have another officer and officer also that's been here fifteen years. I don't have the certificate. He's not here tonight. Nick Chris. We will award that to him later, and hopefully he'll with us and get that paper also. We will move into the committee reports.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I'd like to recognize Dr. Johnson.
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Department of Arkansas Water Health, and I think that's quite an honor coming from Greenwood, and also from the council.
Absolutely. Congratulations. So the inherited submissions, I think, are ready.
No, it's okay. It's our deserved.
We'll move into committee reports. Southwest County Boys and Girls' Club, Kenny Sunday.
Mayor, Charlotte, my council. We're kind of slow out there right now. We've got basketball cheerleaders going on. We're doing baseball, softball sign-ups, flag football sign-ups, and volleyball sign-ups. So we've got a ton of stuff happening right now. Once we finish the numbers, I don't know if I reported the numbers last month or not. It's been a crazy month and a half. But we ended the year with fifteen hundred and fifty-six members, which is just blowing us out of the building. We're still basically working off within five thousand dollars of the same budget we worked ten, eleven years ago when I got here. We just had redirection money and everything to try to provide more services and everything. Of course, doing that, trying to make improvements, has been put on back burner, and that is our number-one goal this year as a board, and our organization is to make some upgrades. We're making steps. We're adding folks and new ones, people to our board. Chief Dawson, excepted our invitation, we're really happy about having him on there, get some insight. He's been out there with his kids and everything, so he's seen it from ground floor up to. We did receive, we're receiving next month seventy-five hundred from the National Boys and Girls' Club. They qualified for their brand this year, which we're really happy. We did receive last month half of our four thousand from the state, so that's helped out of our. And basically, that's about it. Anybody written questions or anything?
Thank you, Kenny. Have you ever thought about hockey or anything?
That's basketball.
Oh, okay. It is along the same.
Yeah, Mr. Perry is always like that.
Thank you for all that you do. Uh, believe Mrs. Lisa Moore is not here tonight from the senior center. We'll go to Parks Commission. Kenny?
Mayor, council. I attended the Arkansas Festivals and Events Association. I joined that up late last year. It's like a good opportunity to start interacting with some of the statewide organizations, and this is, we met down in Little Rock last week, and we were able to come up with some good contacts and some good ideas to make our pretty impressive and qualified quote just a little bit better. Very, very impressed with the way we did it. While down, I also attended the mandatory kickoff meeting with Department of the Department of Trailers at City Lake. That is a hundred twenty-five thousand dollar grant really addressed in the act of one of our budget I need to do business here, panel show. And we've got all the documentation, these are the contracts, and we're going to go through that with our show, make sure we get all that. That'll be a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars that they will match, and we'll have to come up with thirty-one thousand and change. We have twenty thousand budget right now, and we have to use the other, get the other one thousand with end time services. If we can do that with city equipment volunteer later, and we have provisions all set for that. The final punch list is about done with the amphitheater, and we'll also be transferring some money over from last year to finish paying for that. They all are fine. Everything's done. We had a stone. It has an air in it. It's already been replaced, so it's looking good. There are all the sod is in. Trees are planted. Handrails are up. Our crew started conversion in the pavilion, converting the overhead metal halide lights over into LED fixtures. I'm going to see a savings, according to the brochures on these very large fixtures, but we'll see a sixty thousand dollar per fixture savings over the life of those halls. And then they're estimated to last about twelve years.
How many fixtures are in there?
Sixteen hundred dollars. We didn't recognize the replacement.
Is there?
It is, and that's the ones, you know, if they go off once they've been on, picks them within this before they won't back up, come on. Right now, the LEDs pop on. The two main guys, Chester Dave, and Mike, and William from my department, I'll do that this week. We're doing that as they burn out. We've loaded up our two thousand sixteen Freedom Festival. Go to the arkansas.com website, so now we have a fun pack that'll show up, and people will hit on that site, and it'll show exactly where our festival is, and it's got a little recap of what we're doing here under the statewide exposure for this event. We're almost ready to start clearing some ground on our North Main project extension. We've got the easements that Mr. Hanby provided to us last week. I'm really buzzed. We've got signatures on those. We're gonna need one other landowner, and then we're ready to start one. Right. If you look at the trail, it's the main artery here, and it goes, oh, it comes out to basketball court, Mel Park, and then it picks up on that new sidewalk that it's putting last year, comes down in front of that Hoffman's house, and then turns and goes back up North Main. That is the three-mile mark right there where the power easement that rode through is through. We're gonna pick up right there, drop down the back of the hill, and come back and make a loop to connect the artery up again, just add a little more footage to turn it. Be a good challenge. It's pretty steep grave there. This is a good part of it. Any other questions?
Thank you, Richard. Gary Grimes is in the workforce Arkansas this evening. Michael Lejeune is not here also tonight. He may be back next month, I think, with an update on the official fire station. We will go to the wastewater report commission. Steve Brader.
Mayor, council, Ms. Derry, maybe. Eric's gonna pass out a map for you. Let me cover. Water commission, wastewater commission met January twenty-fifth. Normal agenda items. We talked about the budgets, changes that took place in the last month of the year. There was also some discussion about increases, and we explained to the commission how we're gonna hold and just kind of freeze until the council has an opportunity to do their review. I think that's gonna put tomorrow for study session. And then after that study session is complete, we'll move forward with the increases that we have approved. Next item on the agenda that we discussed was related to the water tank. I think the last meeting night told you that the water tank application was in review. It has cleared the Health Department, Arkansas State Health Department, so we've cleared that hurdle. We've cleared all the environmental committees, which there are numerous ones of those, and I couldn't be more than telling you which ones we had to go through. Took quite a few. Had to study the beetles and all the stuff that goes on with those committees, making sure that there's no environmental impact on where we put the tanks. Right now, we're in the Arkansas Water Wastewater Commission for approval, and the Arkansas National Resource, which we've talked about many times before. They're meeting in February, so after that meeting, we are on the agenda for February, so after that meeting, we should get approval to move to the next phase, which will start the whole understanding, the bond discussion, and come back to the council and make sure everybody's comfortable with the bond, and get the bond attorney involved, and make sure that we do all the appropriate things we have to do. I actually think there may be a waiting period, is there not, Mike, for a bond? We have to go through all that process. So we'll get you in the loop, and I hope to trust our construction, get it in front of you for approval, and start construction in May. It's kind of hard to say if we're gonna hit that target at this point in time, but we are still looking at some of it. Last thing, we've covered on the agenda, which I wanted to touch base with you guys on today, is the map we have in front of you. If you look at the picture, if you put Walmart here on the bottom, it'd make it easier where you're looking north. Walmart's on the bottom of the page there, was probably Seventy-One. You've got Tinsper up on the top. That's facing north. This was the proposal. We talked about sewer. You know, we put the water line across Tinsper, provided the water services for those commercial districts. And we've been talking about the potential. This has been through engineering. Right now, we're working on easements. Walmart, I think we cleared that hurdle. We just got people last minute cleaning up on the Walmart construction easement, and then we've got two properties that we're trying to get easements on. So if you're looking at this, you see the green line. That's actually the proposed sewer enhancement. We come north from the main sewer line there on Highway Seventy-One. We come north on Walmart's property. We do a ninety to the east and a ninety to the west. The ninety to the east stays on Walmart's property till it gets to the yellow line, and then it kind of makes a northeasterly track across Hickman property. We're not a hundred percent sure that we're gonna be able to get that Hickman easement. We're still working with that. If we don't get the Hickman easement, it'll stop right there at their property. And then if you look at the west side, Mr. Holly, where the white X's are on the west side there, if we don't get his easement, we'll stop right there, and we'll come across where that white line is drawn on the northwest corner there as a Plan B option to get the same property we were trying to get coming up north. So we have a couple of different options that we can take. It would provide sewer to all but one property. One property in question is gonna be the one that's on the corner of Tinsper and Liberty. If we cannot get easement from this Hickman, then obviously we wouldn't be able to service that corner lot. At this point in time, Greg is looking at some options. It may be that if someone buys that property, and they're interested in the sewer, we wouldn't do anything now, but if that option presents itself, then we might could bore under Liberty Drive and hit over in Westwood on that first street that takes a right and come into Westwood, there's a sewer line that's in the street there, so we might get that. We'd have to go between two houses, but, you know, it wouldn't be any damage done, and once it's all cleaned up, you know, it'd be pretty smooth, and we wouldn't have any issues there. But that's a last resort. Our desire would be to get the easement from the Hickmans, and we're able to tie that last lot in, but we're thinking of some options if we're gonna do that. Again, this whole process is gonna cost us about seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars, depending on how much rock we have to go through, and what the, what the cost per foot is gonna be when we start digging. So just want to give you a copy of that, so you understand what we're trying to accomplish here. That would provide both sewer and water for all of those properties on that Tinsper corridor. Any questions?
Steve, what's the white line over by Greenwood Collision?
That's, that's an option B. In the event we cannot get that northwest line in where the X's are, that we have to go across Mr. Holly's property.
Where would it connect?
Where would the white line connect?
Yes.
There's already a sewer main right there at the end of it. We'll just tie into that.
Does that existing sewer main come down where the pink lines are? Is it parallel highway?
Yes. I mean, I wouldn't say it's a hundred percent parallel, but it runs in general through that area.
Those two lower properties have access to sewer.
They already have access to sewer, and that's one's gonna be one of the challenges, because Mr. Holly's gonna grant us an easement. He gets no benefit from that easement, because he's already got sewer, other than, you know, his ability to want to be able to have the city in that, if you recall.
Village property left, that other property.
Sure, absolutely.
Is there any benefit of going, just following the Walmart, I guess, utility easement, kind of make a little jog south, and then go along that north edge?
Yeah, water won't flow uphill. Yeah, I think Greg would strike me as like, actually, it's pretty significant to drop off, and we have to, we have to drive away, push the water up the, up the hill and around the corner.
That makes sense why he wouldn't look at that option, man.
The engineer drew this up, so we have to trust him. What to do?
Is that the one by Greenwood Collision? Is that the port that went to Central?
Yes. And we had that easement, so that's all cleaned clear, and if we need to tie into that, there's a manhole there, so if we need to tie into that, we can do it.
The west end of that white line is where that sewer comes up from the lane to the vent one?
That's correct. Comes across tractor supply.
Well, other comes across.
Yeah, you're seeing the bottom, right there on the, on the varied edges of the pictures, you're seeing the bottom portion of tractor supply that goes up there.
Is it, again, in the engineer's mind, you know, it's the terrain there, the same, to get that easement across the Holly property as opposed to the Peoples property? Yeah, buddy Ray Peoples, you know.
Oh, okay. So what's the question again?
If we just moved it, just a little bit.
There's a huge, yeah, I thought that too. There's a huge ravine there.
Okay.
So what they're trying to do is stay west of that ravine to try to provide for the fall, so we can run down, you know, with the water, with the sewer again.
You have another good reason.
You're an engineer. How would you want to know that?
In my mind, I do. There's a ravine in there somewhere.
There's a huge ditch there.
It's a ravine.
Any other questions about that? We'll keep you posted on that, on the easements, and, you know, again, hoping this is something that we can try to get in some time, if you're alive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brader. It's time to move into the, we actually have no citizens that have signed up tonight on the citizen forum, and I, as always, I try to let everybody know if you missed that signup sheet, we'd like to speak at this time, and that would be the time to do so, because we'd like to have anybody, so we'll move into agenda additions. Can I ask department number one?
I have a budget resolution to add as item number seven, to pay for the demolition of the house that the city acquired at Monley Main Street.
Thank you. And I also have one myself. If you'd be number eight, I might just put out there for discussion and we'll control officer. And also I have a request from Mr. Bell this evening. If the council is willing to do it, or at least to look at this and move item number six, or I guess we can move eight now, either way, we'll move Avenue six to number one. I'm sorry, can I, what can you do? If that pleases the council, we'll give no problem, so Brownfield's gonna have to set the volume for our business, unless they just like to.
They don't need a citizen.
I, that may be, that may be the punishment. Worth it for price. That'll be a council?
Yes.
Six to number one, and one to number six.
Right.
Okay. Do what?
Our resolutions, those are all.
They should be on there right now.
Those are additions.
Number five?
Oh, wait.
Number five?
Oh, one of them is there, number five. But there's another. The Grant Foundation.
Yeah, I thought they tried to data those together.
Oh, they're both in number five? There's two resolutions.
I guess we can add one.
They're both capital and bridges, probably.
Just leave them single together. They're both both resolution.
Five has a five A and five B. Is that? Anyone else?
Todd, do you still wanna add that, that you have to talk to you about our?
We've got that answer for them.
Number one, planning a building.
Mayor, council, Ms. Derry, Andy. Tonight, I'll, you have in front of you an ordinance for the annexation of the Brownfield property. This property has been released out of county. It's gone through all the legal steps that's required, so we bring that forward in front of you tonight for approval. It's also, the notice it has an emergency clause. I'm not sure the emergency clause enacted, that way the Brownfields can come down and get their water tap soon. The notice, the ordinance says it will supply fire, police, and water. They're taking up sewer. They are on a specific tank, so let's not worry.
This is ordinance, we're not adjusting the old words or repealing or?
No, this is just for annexation, Mr. Perry. This is just bringing the property in, and so therefore they are allowed to have all prior privileges of citizen agreement.
I'd like to motion pass this one. Put our word in print by five, officer.
Second.
Motion to the second. I was, I have, we, and they've given you a right-of-way easement for?
They have the right-of-way, yeah, and they'll connect to the water up on Morning Glory, right in the top of that cul-de-sac, so they're good to go there. They just needed to be able to purchase the water tap and put it on, and they will have water.
About setbacks?
They're all good.
We've got, so I've taken them in. We will receive setbacks off the street.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
David Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
David Daniel?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
The ordinance annexing certain real property within the city of Arkansas, assigning awards declaring emergency.
I make the motion, we suspend the rules and waive second, third.
Second.
Have motion and second to suspend rules and waive first. Second, third.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
David Johnson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
David Daniel?
Yes.
Lance Terry?
Motion to adopt.
Motion and second to adopt?
The second round. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
David Johnson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
David Daniel?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Motion to negmursh, boss.
Same. Motion and second to, like, emergency clause?
Brown?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
David Daniel?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Bell? You still have to stay.
Open the city, Greenwood. Thank you.
Number two. Unless you're willing to put the, you wanna do all business? Don't. Yeah, well, I actually, that's what I had flipped, but we can do that. I don't mind doing that, is that what you said?
Oh, you want to do all?
Yeah, just walk the six to one, but we can just go down the line now. Okay.
Mayor, council, Mr. Hammond, Ms. Derry. I have a couple of questions about the ordinance tonight. I've had plenty of phone calls. One, one day when we discussed this one, somebody, I think up there, talked about BB guns and target practice. I can't recall who that is, but I know that wasn't something that I added, and people called today about leaving in the portion of the BB gun shooting with anyone under eighteen in the DUC Division, eighteen ought to be shooting, and people still want to target practice their bows. And also I've had phone calls about leaving in hunting and sealings for archery. I know we discussed this back when I talked about that, brought up elevated position, but I don't think, I don't think it was ever included as far as decision made on that. But I wanted to ask you those questions tonight, because I know the BB gun and shooting the bows target practice was added to this ordinance, and I forgot about that, so I was reminded today. So if we're repealing it, we're repeating that again also, and I didn't know if you intended, I can't remember who brought it up, but if you intended to still take that back away, or if we're gonna allow that now.
Criminals are out there relocated with the red dragon? Pretty much.
But just so I'm clear, before we enacted this ordinance fourteen dash ten, what was the rule on BB guns? So when we, so up until, when did we pass this order? July twenty-fourteen. So until July twenty-fourteen, from that point previous, throughout the history of Greenwood's existence, as far as you know, it was illegal to shoot BB guns within the city. You've got a provision right in there on section three, under the supervision of the responsible adults, so that kind of puts it back in that.
And I'd like to start this all over, we were agreeing that we're just making changes to this one, we have to go back to the reading one.
That's what I would recommend, uh.
I mean, hunting season's about over, uh, practice season is over, we're here hunting, so.
Why don't we table this issue and come back with another state session, something like, we'll specifically add this and that to the year, we went through a lot of effort at the time we passed this ordinance and it seemed like even if that ever, we may not get it exactly right, I hate to just repeal something we've been a lot of effort into without some thought to it.
I know the people out in the, with the bows, you know, old annex, proposed area, said that, said the A word, but, uh, I know that they don't want to have to come back and hear and fight for this ordinance to be passed if they were to be proposed to be annexed again, so we would be going through the same thing with them, it's just, this never said anything about it just being the annexed area, that, that caused the first issue with the target practice and, uh, just want to clarify this, so I hate to come back in here today to ask these questions, but since last council meeting, a lot of people have found out and have asked about those things such as the BB guns and, you know, shooting the target for archery, and I told them I would pass them down.
Sorry, there was a chief of citizen, Mr. Raver, did you need?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was just gonna say, I think Dr. Johnson's got a great idea to table this to study because if we repeal this ordinance, the school has an archery program which it would become illegal for them to have the archery program because they do discharge archery under controlled environments, it is controlled, but it doesn't specify that, so I think we don't want to step on the school either.
Uh, you know, our intent is to be reasonable people, you know, and, and so we want to make sure when I pass the laws that it's unreasonable.
Well, I don't want, like Rob said, I mean, every kid gets a BB gun Christmas, I don't want them to drive through across country to go shoot BB guns, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it's perish.
So, so I would make a motion to table this, to have a little chance to study.
I said.
I can ask, uh, Damian Fisher, um?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to know what's your?
I'd like, like Dr. Johnson said too, maybe check some other cities and kind of see what Fort Smith is and.
So, just understand this, in the meantime, if somebody has ten acres, they can right now, they can target shoot.
We have a motion and second on the floor to table this.
It was for thirty days or till the next Monday?
Next, count to three, the.
I would say table it until we've had a chance to have a study session.
Okay.
As long as I have.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Vice Terry?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. Uh, number two, new business. Thank you.
I've been with Joe on this issue three or four times, um, and I have a little prepared that I'd like to give it over here, but since it's on the agenda, I would like the street department to go ahead and have our opinion to speak to it, I'll have the witness, um, over here, uh, three for next month.
Joe, you might come in, speaking on behalf of the, um, Captain Chad, the law director.
This ordinance, uh, we had to get some garbage cleaned up on it, um, it has to do with maintenance of, uh, natural growth in the right-of-ways. We've been working on this for quite some time and.
Go ahead if you would, explain to us what the problem is, what we're trying to address.
Well, we noticed that, in the beginning of the ordinance, it states that the homeowner is liable for maintenance of natural growth. Two paragraphs later, it relieves homeowner of liability of natural growth, so we just, like I said, just clean up the garbage of it.
And the end result, we get the homeowner to be liable for natural growth.
That's correct.
And, and this, not necessarily initiated, maybe initiated by the fact that Joe and I have been working for, as long as I've been in office for sure, to try to get back out and clean some of these wa, ditchways and easements up, and obviously, when you go out and look at them, some of them are old grown, and unfortunately for those folks that just live in a home, and I'm sensitive to that issue, especially if it's a widow lady or somebody that can't handle this, where the thing, the city at some point has to go back and decide, okay, now it's time to do it again, and then turn it back over to the, to the homeowner, but we certainly want to get it, make sure that the homeowners understand that they are, and the city's always responsible for blockage, uh, debris, things like that, silt and things like that, but at some point, and we're working, we've been working for a while, to try to get back on track and get it all cleaned up again, and I know, you know, I'm, I'm preaching to the choir, that as soon as you get it cleaned up, it starts off, that process starts over, and so, just a way to get the ordinance cleaned up so then we can go out and physically clean it.
This ordinance clarifies, you want drainage easements, the intent is to clarify that the homeowner is responsible for that drainage.
Yeah, correct.
Right.
It's ultimately, it's the homeowner's property, they own the property, a lot of them, we've had inspections, they believe that beyond their cancer, the city owns, and that's not attached.
So, this is, again, my opinion, is in the drainage easement for right-of-ways.
Yes.
And I guess, is there any garbage in there that says, you know, if they don't, you know what, uh, will be done?
There will be, yes.
I don't think there is now, is there?
That's what it's.
Okay, we're, we're trying, that's not them working on drainage.
Times, buildings, things like that.
I would say, no, I mean, like, you know, certain areas, you know, several houses, you know, that affect this, you know, drainage area, and I think, you know, if you're out there, I would think of each individual house and you're to, not get rid of the problem, which is what we do, we're not all cleaned out, I think that there must be a way that we could clean it out and just.
And you think that's covered under the minimum standards, it was passed, uh, last month on, you know, high grasses and things like that, and it does have fines associated with it.
And, and the spot cleaning is exactly what's difficult, especially difficult to expl, explain to citizens that have an issue or they feel like they have an issue, and they do sometimes, and they're in their backyard, but right up the creek, if you will, or the ditch, or either side, there's not an issue, so for us to go out and clean that one and then leave the rest of it, or the other way around, more than, more than not, because you're, you're kind of beating your head against the wall, so you got to get, and right now, stated in the Baker today, we're gonna, we're talking, we're calling it task force, by the way, so it sounds more tough, but we're gonna, we're gonna get out and decide where all this start, needs to start and, and go from point A to point Z, I suppose, at some point, so.
I guess I, I think we need to have some kind of, uh, you know, verbiage in there that says that, you know, once it gets a certain path, that we will, you know, do it or whatever, because again, it's only as good as the weakest spot in the ground, and I think these recent rains that we've had, you know, shown the, the benefit of us keeping, you know, the drainage areas clean because, again, you know, I mean, well, as far as I know, it was, was nonexistent, and, uh, if we just have one spot that creates a, a potential dam or, or blockage of the water and starts backing up the water, then, you know, it doesn't matter how you do on the, the other ninety percent.
So how does that work down Crook Creek as a dam? I mean, that's a pretty good sized creek with several houses and, and long distances, is, are those, are their properties?
That creek itself is actually the core, that's core.
So that's, none of those property numbers, their property lines are easements.
And there's a buffer that you have to stay out of.
There could be a few, I'm sorry, there could be a few, and I know of one for sure that, that in fact, when I was still in the parks department, we had an adhesive that came across that creek because the trail just barely clipped their property, so there are a few that come across, none of which maintain, I don't mean that sound bad, they just, it's, it's creek, so their fences are way back off of that creek.
The offset is probably different.
Creek Wood is a better example, right, uh, Creek Wood would be a better example of.
Yes.
Property or maintained, not or, or not.
Also, um, which we've been doing a lot of time over in the Indian Hills, the grand additions, we've done a lot of those.
What these gentlemen find out, and most people, I mean, I, not putting blame, but if you, once you put privacy fence up in your yard, you typically neglect what's behind the privacy fence and you may even throw some clipping and whatnot over there, so that's, that's as much debris and that's.
They add to the natural growth, a lot of the clipping they throw over, which calls blockage.
Do we need to rethink the way that works now, I mean, the, if you have a drainage easement, you know, when you build a neighborhood and you say, I'm, I'm declaring this a drainage easement, what are you declaring? That you're all going to take care of this or that we're gonna have this easement, we're gonna maintain it, we the city are gonna maintain the infrastructure, and so we may come driving along with the bulldozer and we have a right to bulldoze the easement because we have this, it was put there, and then, you know, we, the city maintains easements the same as we maintain sidewalks and streets.
The problem with that is a lot of our easements are also utility, they're drainage shared utility easements, so you have to be real careful with what that, you do take in and out. A lot of it works, I don't have a full hand.
But it would give us, that we have a right though, as a city, to go in there and clean that, I mean, you know, regardless of how you do it, you know what I'm saying?
I think we have the same right, if I'm not mistaken, the same right the utility company has, if you're, if you're fancy blocking utility easement, the power company needs to come through, they can take your fence, and we've not done that, I might not, but, and there could be an easement crew that would work non-stop, twenty-four seven, every day of the year probably, inevitably caught up, so, it, I wouldn't, it'd be nice to look at and see if there's options.
I don't know which way makes the most sense.
It's a tough thing.
To get fifteen hundred people to brush off a ditch, that's not likely to happen.
In the subdivision, you know, you, they're all different, and that's, that's the key too, you never go and find one, you know, some of these B ditches, these concrete B ditches, that's, that's kind of no worry, that's wild, you want to find the, the contractor and give him the hug or something, but.
There's still some, like, there's.
There's other ones that are not so good, so it's, it's a hard call, and of course, planning has a big part of that, when, when these, when they come in and build, put in the subdivision, and all we said, and.
We, like you know this, this has been an ongoing discussion for years of, can we fix the ditch, can we clean the ditch, can we strengthen the ditch, can we finally come up with something that says, we're gonna maintain drainage easements?
I think the one just like, runs through the school property, you know, goes up and heads up towards the, you know, main street, you know, and that's a pretty good, can be a pretty good creek, you know, and the water runs, uh, pretty good.
I mean, Randy, I don't know exactly what his issues are, Randy Mizel.
His is erosion, it's not like the growth or anything.
I mean, most homeowners, property owners don't have a bulldozer to take it with, you know what I mean?
I don't know if it's really a problem with the newer stuff we've been left with, but maybe we need to set standards on how it's left to us, like a road, we'll, we'll only accept the road if it's left to a certain standard, but maybe we need, we need to be a little harder on it as far as how it's left to us as easement, you know, whether it's just a, you know, this trashy riprap or whether it's something that's easy for the new homeowner to maintain.
Or you, you know, subdivisions where it's, you have to build a concrete ditch.
They stand like, you know who, like Cecil Cooper.
Yeah.
That was always Cecil, that's why Cecil was on the council, we concrete ditches.
Well, I'm gonna do, you know, like, uh, up here above the school, we have.
That's concrete, a lot of it is concrete, but they're selected, there is still maintenance on it.
Yeah, you have soil, that tree's growing soil.
I, I, I think we, I don't, we just, I don't think we ever have, and I've never seen
it in our subdivision regulations, any detail on how these drainage easements are to be left with us, I don't remember that in anything.
I have to check, uh, uh, like I said, we have, I mean, we have requirements on drainage and then drainage studies and things like that, but, uh, one of the things that you have to consider, like, uh, Damian was talking about, concrete ditches, uh, those are kind of nice, but they sure speed up the water, and that's kind of what we ran into, uh, you know, there on the other side of Nashville, that, that drain down there on Nashville like a waterfall, but it's coming down, so when you have things, you know, like natural grasses and things like that, even riprap, things like that, that slows the water down and it keeps it from hitting the lower end of, of the city at a high rate of speed.
You know, uh, and cities are getting away from that, and they're, they're getting away from these impermeable surfaces, even parking lots, to try to slow down that pre-development water flow.
And you know, like a king fountain in, in Maple Ridge up there, they have a tension pond, but also, you know, should relieve most rains and things like that, but, uh.
I think we kind of got left with a mess on Maple Ridge. And GK did. Well, sure, I just invented, like, you know, next time, maybe when we go through subdivision regulation stuff, we need to look at what other cities are requiring out of these drainage easements, how they're to be left with us.
Yeah, and like I said, that's when a city engineer would do good, or have a second opinion from an engineer that's proposed a subdivision, take it over here and say, you know, check this over, do you see any problems or anything like that, because, you know, it's an engineering function, and, uh, like I said, the larger cities, they have on staff engineer, you know, we might look at putting an engineer on or taking or something.
And, and you know, that might go part of my council forum, where I want to speak to your council forum, but, you know, out of some, the way these are left with us, when utilities come back in to do work, I'm not so sure that we're diligent on going out there and making sure it's kind of cleaned up and able to maintain, but these drainage easements are also utility easements, and we make money off utility easements, and it turns into franchise fees, which is fairly significant part of our budget, so, but I don't know when they come in and do work, how, how are we going behind them and saying, well, they didn't locate it, uh, here we got, these are, this is our policy on how you're to leave this, I know when they come through my yard and they were doing fiber optic making, they didn't leave it like so great, I went out there and I just took care of it.
Yeah, and, and that is a problem, that's why when, uh, the tree, you know, power lines bring in the tree people and they start fettling them and fettling them and all that, like, behind Bulldog and, and the, uh, the booth, they left trees out there cut up in, you know, four foot sections, and I had to call them up and say, you clean this up, you know, or we will stop you from cutting trees in Greenwood, and they were out there the next day, cutting those things up and rolling them up the hill and cutting them up and getting them out there, so, you know, it, it's, I don't think you would have to, to have that discussion every time, but I think, you know, one time they would get the idea that, that what, this is what we expect.
Do we have a policy to act, uh, what our expectation is?
Well, I agree, ordinance.
Yeah, I'm hoping the other guys, you know, that, because there's other utilities that are coming through, doing, uh, fiber optics and, you know, cable TV and.
It's on public ground everywhere that we're thinking of doing.
I couldn't say, you know, we asked, the fiber optics comes through here and, you know, went out, I would tell them all that, and it did break up, but I don't know who was following up on that to make sure they. And, and you know, that might go part of my council forum, I want to speak to your council forum. But, you know, out of some, the way these are left with is when utilities come back in to do work, I'm not so sure that we're diligent on going out there and making sure it's kind of cleaned up and able to maintain. But these drainage easements are also utility easements and we make money off utility easements. It turns into franchise fees, which is fairly significant part of our budget. So, but I don't know when they come in and do work, how are, how are we going behind them and saying, well, they didn't locate it? Uh, here we got, these are, this is our policy on how you're leave this? I know when they come through my yard and they were doing fiber optic making these, but they didn't leave it like so great. I went out there and I just took care of it.
Yeah, and that is a problem. It's like when the tree, you know, power lines bring in the tree people and they start cutting them and cutting them and all that. Like behind Bulldog and, and the booth, they left trees out there cut up in, you know, four foot sections. And I had to call them up and say, you clean this up, you know, or we will stop you from cutting trees in Dreamwood. And they were out there the next day cutting those things up and rolling them up the hill and cutting them up and getting them out there. So, you know, it is, I don't think you would have to, to have that discussion every time. But I think, you know, one time they would get the idea that, that this is what we expect.
Do we have a policy to act ahead of what our expectation is?
Well, I agree, or, I'm true that I agree.
I'm hoping the other guys, you know, that, because there's other utilities that are coming through doing, uh, fiber optics and, you know, cable TV and
It's on public ground everywhere that we're thinking of doing.
I couldn't say, you know, we asked, the fiber optics comes through here and, you know, went out, I would tell them all that, it did break down. But I don't know who was following up on that to make sure they didn't break down.
Wouldn't it need to be us because we own the easement, they're dedicated to us.
And, you know, in that case of the, in the, you know, street easement, so I guess they would be, they're ones that would determine that.
Well, I don't know what the answer to all that is, but it seems like a good opportunity to try to address. I mean, I think for years since I said, these guys are stuck in this, they're stuck in this. Of what can we do, what can we not do, what should we do, you know? A good opportunity to address all that and say, this is it, that's the policy. Give these guys in the street department.
Is work being maintained? Yeah, we're going to have to figure out what property, what we're going to have to take care of first.
One of the issues, the utility wasn't going to be in front of my issue, it was not that blocking.
No, it was not.
I mean, they, they destroyed everything, they, they jumped the test today. Good as nothing do, but, I mean, it didn't have no way to do it.
But I, I, but it is important, you know, again, I, I see that from what the, the city has done, street department and thinking, you know, I mean, flooding has been mitigated tremendously. And I think, yeah, we don't stand a lot of it and we'll be back to, um, wherever we are.
We just got to figure out what's
Joe.
Chad.
Chad, step up.
It's Chad Graff.
Why y'all discussing this? A good example is one of the detention ponds over here in King Fountain. Drains over there to Ridge Bridge. And we, we back there before June of summer to start cleaning. A lot of silt had built in, so anytime that you set up, you know, we go and we shot the outlet of, of water flow coming in, that went into the creek. All we can run at is, is at one percent. And at one percent, that's really slow, so you're going to have a lot of sediment, you know, stay behind, but that's best we could do. But going in there, we had several power lines, fiber optic lines that were going to be in our flow, flow line, so. Took several hours just to even try to get over the cost communication to come out and look. But we did get the electric company in. When we go out and resume digging ditch, of course, they'll be on hand as we spot those lines and then we'll come back on. But that's some of the stuff that we're finding in all of the drains, uh, which is causing problems, makes it hard for us to go in there and, and do the type of job.
A lot more than just place water.
Get the proper flow.
Yeah, it's just to get the proper flow, you know. A lot of times, one percent, and when you're looking at one percent, it's just, you know, one foot fall is better than a two. So, I just thought I'd mention that.
This is Chad Graff, the, one of your interim street director.
I know that, you know, we're requiring these drainage studies and detention ponds and retention license. But right now, really, you know, whatever they dedicate is coming to us. I mean, we're, we're having to go in and maintain it.
No matter what shape it is.
I'd still like to figure out how we can require that there be a property owners association to every neighborhood and let them have it, let them maintain it, rest of that. Because we're going to end up with a lot of detention or retention areas. I, I don't know how all the cities are handling it.
Yes, if you go in, Mr. Cooper.
Now you're telling me this. But I, you know, some people put them out front in their neighborhoods and put them out front in their businesses and dress them up and make them look nice. Some people hide them back, but ours seem to be kind of hidden back and then left with us to try to maintain a mess.
How in the past, all I've been told is that ours to take care of and how?
I know better. I, I think, I don't know how we can do it, but I think somehow or another our subdivision regulations or commercial guidelines auto reflect it. They're, they're keeping it and they're required to maintain it. We're going to wind up with a very large maintenance crew at some point, spending a lot of money.
Sonny, is that covered also? Is that what you said, Olivia, that some of this is in your?
Minimal standards.
The minimal standards is, you know, if, if there is a, uh, high grass or if it's, uh, in most of these cases, you, you know, you've got varmints running around in there, it's not a healthy situation. There's several things you can approach that with, it's like I said, a health consideration, a fire consideration, you know, things like that, uh, that's covered under the minimal standards. And then there, like I said, like I was telling you, see, there is a fine, uh, that is designated for these, these types of, uh, if you write a citation, that is a continuing, continue to get higher and higher if it's not taken care of. You know, I think that, uh, you know, probably or possibly a good, uh, publicity from the city on people needing to take care of their, their property would help, but, uh, you know, it's, it's like you and I went out to Creekwood one time. The lady was complaining about throwing up behind her fence, but there were two fences within a foot from each other. This property owner came up and gave leeway for his back fence. This property owner came up and gave leeway for his back fence. So you had about a foot and a half section here that had all the, uh, bugs coming up there, poison ivy and, you know, creatures coming out there and all that, which, you know, Joe couldn't get up in there with a weedy, much less with a piece of equipment. And, um, you know, the only option that the property owner did is to go out there with, you know, with a killer and try to kill it all. But you, you can't get into it. And it's something that they created themselves and, uh, but have you, you know?
Our drains got a lot better than when we got King Fountain, too, these last year, these rains we've had. I mean, well, I don't know, I mean, eight days, we didn't have work, I mean, it's, but it's
I think the good, you know, that's
Be good to one of those canal, one of the
I think we're getting more and more sediment. Because it just, it just amazes me if they can clean out a ditch in a few weeks, you go by there and it's filled back up with dirt.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, you're getting seven inches of rain in four hours, it's, it's, it's hard to cover any of that no matter what you do.
They had Almer Street cleaned out perfect. I mean, you go out there now and it's halfway up to the pile again, it takes a couple of weeks.
But I agree, I mean, there's some, there's some things that need to be addressed and we need to look at, but for the most part, I mean, I
Well, I think the best time to look at too, when you're not having a big problem, you know, that's, you know, when you're kind of be able to sit back a little bit and discuss it and try to figure some stuff out. I'd rather be doing it now and talking about having flooding issues, trying to figure out what happens from what I'm first.
The one thing we don't need to be focusing on is two privacy fences a foot and a half apart from each other. There's stuff between them that the whole, they ask about our business whatsoever. Maybe we're wanting to learn how to prosecute, so to figure out a way to fix that. It's not our problem. Now, there's supposed to be an evening global field, I do, because there's more fences down, like you said, we'll cut it down and then they can put it back up at their leisure. But, I mean, we don't have a prosecutor, so that's not the city's problem. And I know, we know we need to ordinance establishing the proper privacy defense, you know? We, we have, we're so micro managed, whatever, anywhere by now, it's pathetic, but, yeah, just pass by that stuff. And if they complain, my numbers will look, I'll be more happy to do exactly that.
That's probably what people call us, that we're having flooding issues. And you go out there and all their shrubs from, I don't know, over their fence in the back. So they want us to come and clean it up.
That's going to be the number one problem, nine percent of the
But I, but I, like Sonny mentioned, you know, he said, in some places can, you know, herbicide be used just to, you know, once you all clean it up, it might look messy, you know, to keep it down?
As long as it doesn't cause erosion.
Yeah, I mean, you know, y'all are
Rubber action.
Yeah, when y'all bare earth everything and remove the riparian buffer or the riparian area, you've just created a new silting problem, what you call silting, actually erosion.
Oh, we can go in and see.
And that's great.
Those issues like that, there's
There's nothing wrong with cutting a tree down, but you just plant another one in its place in a better area. And, you know, where you bare earth some of these crank banks, which probably have gotten us in trouble with four of engineers, you've destroyed that riparian area. And we need to go back and put in native blue stem grass, we need to put in signal trees, we need to put in
Except for the contractors that are the ones bare earthing it and, and we're having to go back and dig up willows that's growing in the place of the oaks that they dug up.
But once you, you know, destroy that native bare earth, I mean, once you bare earth and destroy that native riparian area, we're going to just wind up in this big circular maintenance nightmare. And that's where we're at on some of this stuff. But there's nothing, maybe there's nothing we can do about it right at this moment. We got to do something, go back and start putting in native species, you know, putting in signal trees. And, um, you know, I drive by that, you know, it looks nice over by Walgreens, but, you know, that would be an area that we need to work on that riparian area and try to slow down some of that erosion in that silting.
What are you saying, hang on? One thing you don't go
I sound like she's not the most educated about this.
It's what the committee, the committee, the builders can be right or wrong.
That's a lot of work, Dan.
Well, you, you got
You said riparian five times.
That's, define riparian, you know, work.
Define riparian? I can, I can make it easy, it's the way God made it. That's the easiest, you know, we could write two pages on what riparian is, but it's just the way God made it. And just work until we got the Ford Brown after it or our street department, they went in there and bare earth it with a bulldozer.
Well, I think Rod raised a good point, that while we're going in there cleaning things out, if we think about what we're doing and try to alleviate a problem for the future, you know, there's things that you can put in there, you know, uh, small pools and things like that. It's the flow of the water down to the point that it fills up with, with silk every time it rains. But, you know, I'm sure Joe says some of the trees, you know, they might, they, you know, the sides are, are eroding. So, you know, look at the flow of the water and, and, you know, kind of deal with that, not just go in there and scrape it out.
You know, pop, pop in the area of water, it'll look pretty good.
The real issue that we're having is not the big groundwater anyway, it's in the developments where there's small runoff water.
You know how we've written our law, our local law, and it's been silent here? Really, all the area we're talking about belongs to the Parks Department, Parks Commission. All the wetlands, all the creeks, all the drains, all that belongs to the Water Commission, if you look at how it was written. Really, all was, we were left with that, had the water, after the Park and Red Commission was written and passed, was this building and the street department, the rural area. Everything else basically got given to the Water, I mean, the Parks Commission. Maybe they need to be, maybe they need to write the organs to define riparian area.
I know, again, like I said, you know, the, the creeks, they worked with the four of engineers like this. We got the creeks looking really good there, uh, again, right there at Walgreens. You know, I mean, you look, you know, far south off of, you know, Finner Street, you know, it looks nice and clear and everything. But I know another person, like that over there at Forest Hills, again, that rain comes down and that bridge that we got going to, uh, I don't know, East Point or East Hills, you know, he said that, you know, uh, gets blocked up, you know, a little bit. Again, just that water coming down that, that hill so quickly. And I'm thinking, again, if, uh...
Development, not, not the proper drainage.
And, and sure, you know, but, but it's, uh, getting cleared out and then, you know, growth is right back. And so that's what I was thinking, you know, if, uh, you know, some type of, uh, and I don't think herbicide, you know, you know, there's some type of herbicide that, uh, you know, just slows growth or whatever, just doesn't make the bare earth, so we have to
Was that the terror yet?
We're prepared. We're on target a little bit. Obviously, we need some, we need some, we need some help, we need some assistance. Sounds like we can get Mr. Bow and maybe Well, certainly, we need to sit down and talk about more. And, and we got off target a little bit. One is the big, the big creeks, if you will, are doing their job and maintenance, the street department guys have done a great job. We've got letters from some people that live in subdivisions that, that three, four, five years ago were getting flooded. And we've got thank you letters from, from those people thanking us for keeping it maintained. So hats off to the guys that do that. But it's, it's those little areas in the, within the subdivisions that are draining into these bigger creeks that we're really trying to address and have issues with. So, and that's the phone calls that we get, it's somebody that their literally backyard is flooded, maybe not their house yet, but they're worried. They should, maybe they should be concerned, I don't, I know, Mr. McDaniels' yard looks like a lake, although I don't know if it's in your house. But anyway, so we're going to address it, we're trying to. So any, any help, any advice that we can, you guys can offer, anybody else can, we're open for it. But, but everything's going pretty well so far. I don't, all I have to say that. Well, thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Finance department. This is Amy.
Um, we need to go budget resolution to increase advertising six one zero 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 by twelve hundred fifty dollars for the publication of the minimum standard ordinance. I anticipated how much that would cost. We need our budget for it. And funding is available in ten to hundred cash and bank.
I'll make your motion, we approve this resolution.
Second. We have a motion in two seconds.
Brown?
Yes.
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 McDaniels?
Yes.
Yes.
And you?
Who did you say it was?
Sorry.
Who did you say it was, Marshall, Mary?
Sure. This is Ann, would you like to do it?
Sure.
Sorry, why didn't you say that?
And number seven is within the general fund, we need to increase six zeros, six zero zero capital improvements by $2,500, funding available in ten to hundred cash and bank, and that is for the demolition of the house that the city acquired in 2008 New Street.
Make that announcement, it's second. Have a motion to second.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
McDaniels?
Yes.
That is to take place Friday, Friday, mark it on your calendar, it's a big day. I don't know all night.
It's gonna be a major, whatever, the other things you write.
Yeah.
It's a big Friday.
It's a big day.
What's, uh, have the, what's, what's, what's the property is, we never determined, we just got it now?
We have it, and that is a big part of our discussion, because I want what to do with it.
Action Department, you'll get it.
How about retention funds right now?
Riparian.
Riparian, Dan.
Riparian.
Riparian. Okay, sorry. Uh, oh, yes, three, it's number four. Resolution about the revised personnel policy, but, Paul, would you like to address this, please?
As we've stated, in the previous months, we are bringing our policies before we adopt our resolutions, and for the other policies that we're going, we did have some changes to this one, because the things in line with the drug testing policy that we believe has, so that we can be prepared to implement that. We increased our safe time from only being able to carry sixty, sixty hour days, seven hundred and twenty. And we feel that will help people if they have a long-term illness, or if people sometimes will go last day, giving people more safe time. And then the other policy that we put in place was regarding our information security, the one that we currently have, to address all the things that we see our own with the dam, as far as what, and what we have to be paying, and so we're gonna learn that, learn that. So, last month, I gave all the, I gave the yellow of what we learned, stick in, and this month, it's just outlawed.
Make a motion, we adopt this resolution, approve the resources, policies, changes.
Second. Motion to second.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
McDaniels?
Yes.
Yes.
And you? I'll take just a second, if counsel will allow, make an announcement and kind of thank you, not a kind of a buddy, buddy, thank you. Ms. Holland has been offered a position at Portsmouth, at the Ostile, something, something, old school.
Arkansas College, Rockville.
Yeah, that, and it's a very, very nice position, she has been offered and has accepted, and has been, and two weeks knows, and Miss Tammy Rowley has taken her place. I don't have a proclamation, I don't have a resolution, because if I had, Brooke would have had to type it up today, so that was gonna mess up the whole thing. So, I wanna thank Brooke for doing an outstanding job for my office and everything that she worked on, helping me, keeping me in line, just a big job, and HR issues too, that she's been tasked with, so, if you would, thank Brooke for her support. I never pass up an opportunity to have my picture made, so, Brooke. Do that. Thank you, thank you. Annie came in today, first day to work a little bit, and I don't know what she's gonna say after that, I don't know if she will, but we wish her all the luck with her duties. Parks Department, capital group project, budget resolution, sorry.
Parks Commission has two resolutions they'd like to ask to amend in our 2016 budget, both of which Richard referenced in his report. First, I'd like to ask our部门 transferring funds from our 2016 budget into the 2016 to make our final payment on the ampere. Total amount, each capital improvement will be $70,442.50. All but $3,886.95 of that was in the 2015 budget, the $3,886.95 is an overreach on landscape, sign, I believe, or soil, I'll pop soil, I can't remember what it is. So, we'd like to have that moved in 2016.
Make a motion to pass this resolution.
Second. Motion, second, pass resolution.
Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
McDaniels?
Yes.
McDaniels?
Yes.
And I just said one more thing.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We, we need to reflect, you know, 2016 budget, $125,000 that we're anticipating from our highway departments for the water improvements, and so that would simply be shoulder as income, and going back down on capital improvements to the water projects, which we might get, we already had $20,000, and then that's kind of $25,000.
Make a motion to pass this resolution, and then the budget to reflect those changes.
Second. First and second.
Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniels?
Yes.
McDaniels?
Yes.
We haven't got it yet, but I thought it was the one-
It's a rate person.
Yes, yes.
McDaniels?
Did you get that, did you get this somewhere on this?
He said it was a five, eight, eight.
Okay.
Is, is that the one that Richard refers to, that we also need additional matching funds for that?
It's an eighty twenty creek.
But we have to spend it all before we will be ready for us.
So, what we're saying is, we've, we've allotted $20,000 in the budget, together with $125,000, which is not quite our 20% of, but, and we're, and just trying to use a bit more to make a difference.
So, we don't need to, to have additional money for that?
We don't want to.
In time.
Unless we're not needing it.
In time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bellis. Okay, unless I'm wrong, it could be, uh, I'm not, for animal control officer, uh, just wanna bring this to your attention, if you will, or discuss, or open up for discussion. We talked a little bit about this before, if I can do that, so, now. I have still been, I've still been visiting with, and I gotta probably catch a sonny off guard, but, Bill mentioned this to him, this is, this department, sorry, but, but he and I have talked a little bit about it before, uh, but I still believe and, and think that the animal control position would work very well in the police department. I know we got it in planning now, and there were reasons for that, uh, but, anyway, what you have in front of you is the budget, what it's, it's, it's under budgeted as we, as we speak, under, in Sonny's department, don't call him Sonny, we just, this, this, what you have in front of you is a full budget of what this officer needs, I believe, to do this job, do it correctly, do it safely. That's one thing, send, send a guy out, I think, to do a job, to do results, and so far, we've had results, Jerry Rikus is the officer, Joseph is the officer prior to that, they both do a great job, but they don't have the equipment they need, I, I think, or I hope they do. Sonny has ordered a truck, right, Sonny?
Yes, probably a cage.
And a cage for that truck, so we'll find, we're gonna have a brand new pickup, standing cab, maybe double cab, I'm not sure, is it double?
Double cab.
So, he's gonna have a nice vehicle to work with anyway, and I've talked to Chief quite often in length about this, uh, but I think, and, and again, this is my opinion, and I believe his opinion too, he can speak on this, if, maybe not, I don't think he likes taking things that are necessarily, don't have all the money to go with them, but, uh, I think it's important to put him in that, in that department, not that he can't work as well out there, but I think with the, with the direct supervision of the police department, and his being part of that department makes a, a big difference in what he does, and how he works in the, in the citizen's eyes, for sure. I had a lot of, a couple of things I was gonna say, I can remember all of it, but, he, he also, yes, going to the police department, he will become a reserve officer, which can also add to being additional chief over there, backup, I mean, I'll let you, you guys can answer, ask any questions if you want, Jim, on Sonny, if that's okay, now. So, any thoughts, and I just wanna bring to your attention, none of this is ever asking for it to be passed tonight. I know, I talked to Ann in the finance department today, after our, the lawsuit, just the Griffith lawsuit, it was paid off recently, there are more funds available, I'm just gonna speak in general, you can correct me, $50,000 going to the police departments are correct.
Right, the $100,000 that was paid in the lawsuit every year came off the top of county sales tax. That money will no longer be coming off the county sales tax to go to general, and police's percent is 50%, so therefore, they're beginning an additional $50,000 this year.
I have, I have a lot.
This is her.
But I don't know how to fund it. He needs a new truck, he needs a truck this morning.
We have a truck, we, we have a one-way, a brand new.
Do we have?
Yes.
It was in the budget?
Yes.
It's about twelve weeks out.
Did you not, did you, did you get that big screen in hand? No, it's been ordered, new, double cab, Ford.
Ford double cab, we'll drive with the six compartment, a cage.
And the cage, the cage kills her.
I've been looking at the Portsmouth trucks.
Yeah, it's, it's on its way.
They just, you know, these people are constantly in, in the neighborhoods, and they're, they represent, I think they represent the city more than the police and the fire sometimes.
Yeah, if, if my truck, and like I said, then we'll, then, you know, plant, put the lights and things like that on there, decals.
So, are you wanting to, you're wanting to, you're proposing having a separate animal control officer, separate code enforcement?
Actually, yes, we talked about this.
So, we have two people, one, one code enforcement officer?
Well, we talked about splitting the duties, you, you're not keen, and I, I just want this to be more conversation and everything, I think that's what-
Because we have it, I mean, we set the budget for the animal control officer, correct?
Yeah, he's, he's there, he's in planning right now, I'm, I'm proposing we move him to the police department.
So, this money here is not, it would be net zero, because planning gets all of this money from-
Correct.
From county.
Right.
And, and so, all you're really proposing is an administrative change, correct? Not a budgetary change.
Yes.
Correct?
Now, on, on the surface, now, I'm only, I wanna say that because I don't know what things could come up, I, I want you to be aware that it could be other costs.
I mean, you're not asking for more money for the animal control officer?
No, no.
Not for budget, I mean, not for salary, but for equipment.
Well, I mean, you have to come back and ask, you just have to come back and amend the budget for capital expenditure for the equipment, correct?
Correct.
We're not looking to generate an extra $20,000 here, it's not our budget. So, really, it's just a matter of, the planning, it's just the animal control code enforcement person following the police or thing, that really is you?
Yes.
That's an administrative issue, huh?
Well, I just, I'm just bringing to your, I know-
I'll say, y'all sit down in the room and figure out, figure out what y'all wanna do, 'cause I, it doesn't matter to me, I mean, I, I'd be happy to weigh in, if y'all were willing to weigh in, but I don't have, I don't have strong feelings on where, I think we oughta have an animal control officer, I think there's value in that, I think having-
Pretty much, the person, the chief.
I, I mean, I think, I think budgeting the money to support that is important, and I think we ought to supply him with the supplies he needs, and so if you come back and say he needs a taser, and, you know, a cell phone and stuff he doesn't have, I think we ought to outfit him, I'd support that.
Well, he has the cell phone now, but it's paid by the plan, if the changes made will increase the funding and planning, then it'll increase, or increase in police, increase in-
But, but the net is zero.
But the net, right.
You can buy your kids some lots of-
Ah, that's willing, stand up, Chief, would you take a seat?
I just wanted to make sure I understood what you're saying now.
That, that, yes, that is exactly what I'm asking, and, and again, I don't wanna, this is not about, the planning does do a job, a good job, that's not the point, I just feel, and, and always have felt, strong feelings, if nothing else, that that's, that's a position that ought to be in the police department, just do what he does for a living, I mean, they have, they have their thing back there, and it's hard to keep, or they have their own stuff to do, so, to me, this just fits under his, his supervision and everything that they do.
I'd ask for, basically, well, for the funding, obviously, to get things that he doesn't have, I mean, the office he would go into, we don't have a fund for that office, we would budget just enough to cox, to get what we needed, and, if, if at all possible, and we talk to Ann about this, it's obviously gonna be more work, but if we could have the police budget with the animal control up and separated, so we see, you know, the, 'cause that's adding a lot to my budget, I hate for that number to go up when we come back, and, you know, it shows, I like for it to be separate, and we'll talk to Ann about that, all the expenses where animal control have their own page at the end of our budgets, to show, you know, what they're spending, this is gonna be another expense for, they don't make enough money to cover themselves in fines, and, so, I'll just have it be separate.
They could, they could, make enough money in fines, you're busy.
Sure, I mean, you could, really, I guarantee you, I mean, I don't know all, rules of all, it all works, but, I guarantee that, but if they wanted to, now, you're gonna make everybody down, that, that's not what we're looking for. Well, that's why I asked you to begin with, we, obviously, think a lot of people mad, they get sent, and animal control just adds to it, with telling people they're dressed too tall or-
Well, I mean, there's animal control, there's code enforcement, but animal control's different in my mind than code enforcement, I understand why we're sharing those duties, but I think most citizens, you got some wild dog, or raccoon in my garage, or tap, and some, my daughter, you, those kind of things, you kinda hope there's somebody around that can come out and help you, so.
Rick, you're maybe tipping the gentleman.
Yeah, absolutely, glad to see you come, that, that deal.
I, I think it puts teeth in it more than anything, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, and I know, I'm not saying you have issues with that, but it's hard, I think, probably to follow with the coming out of, on something, I think the police department would give more, is that, is that-
We, we work both ways, and I, you know, I don't see one way, I think there's definitely the other way. You know, my thought would be, maybe you have a totally separate energy, you know, control, 'cause I know that over the years, if you've been in the police department, winds up that you'd have your law enforcement officers out there, and chase down the officers as well, but that really wasn't what we needed either, so.
But the equipment, the issue in there, the, the cost, you see, there's a lot of things, he needs a new tranquilizer gun, and he has to have a taser and pepper spray, and he comes over to my department, he's coming over, wearing uniforms, instead of what he's wearing now, and, there's a-
I think if y'all decide it's best to have him under the police department, he needs more different equipment, I would support, remind him that equipment, if y'all brought resolutions to us to-
Yes, they, they had the minimal amount of equipment when they're in our department now, and, you know, that equipment's been around forever, and he's missing a lot of things that are missing.
It should go on record, book in history, that the truck came through the planning, I think it was. Okay, are we good? Thank you, thank you, Chief.
And we may address our penalties on that stuff too, we talk about, you know, whatever they do in that kind of thing, I mean, I don't know how long that takes, the army-
It's probably been a while since they could put that.
So, that's still up to somebody's time, I mean, is it all matter?
One thing I would like to, you know, when, when this discussion's going on, is, for example, on the code enforcement, for example, if somebody has a dilapidated house, so, this, the other, a structure need to be torn down, tall grass, and things like that, how would we coordinate that to the code enforcement, you know, through the police department, because, you know, I know Jared works a lot on these homes that have been repossessed, the grass is growing up, and, and things like that, we've got some buildings around town, you know, he worked on this one away thing, but he's got some other structures around town that, that need to be removed, and so, you know, there's gonna have to be some way to coordinate that through planning to code enforcement, and, you know, with the police department, so that, that needs to be a consideration.
I think, I think that's been my concern, so if you're listening to this, I just said that, oh, yeah, it's gonna, it sounds like you're gonna be dragged into code enforcement and stuff.
Well, some of the things that he mentioned, I think, are code stuff, stuff that he's not trained on, like the buildings dilapidated now, the tall grass, or the yards unsightly, I mean, that's one thing, but to start talking about how sound the structure is, or, I mean, that's, that's not training that he's got, he'll do that.
Yeah, but he's gonna enforce that now.
Where's our, what, our code inspector, what, you know, if they will do it for also, or how is that?
What was it, Tim?
The code inspector, can he not-
The code inspector is, is a building inspector, he builds it all the way up, but, you know, if we have, for example, over on Old Hackett Road, we've got, where a house burnt down, there's a, a old garage sitting there, so, and so, the code enforcement works with, with the person who owns that property to remove it. Like I said, the, the homes, especially out on the east end of town, that people are moving out of, letting banks take them over, and all of a sudden, grass is coming up, you know, they've got animals in the backyard, not wild animals in the backyard, and so, you know, that's another thing that he, he takes care of. Is he trained for it? You know, he's on job training, yeah, you know, he wasn't trained for it either, but he handles it, and a lot of it, you know, is that I work with him on that, and, and it's, you know, we, we coordinate that, but this is a, the dilapidated house, here's your ordinance that, that enforces that, here's how you find out the owner, and then you take it from there, and then he, he goes through the process of writing the letters, you know, probably get a hold of him on the cell phone, write the letters, and certify letters all the way through, to the point that he turns over mic. Now, just before you're talking about Donald, the Donald, right? No, Donald's building inspector, he goes out, and he, he writes the building permits, he goes out and he inspects his houses as they're being built, to make sure they're built to our specifications in the building code, and things like this. Now, the other one, you know, another one is abandoning cars in people's yards, you know, we got a complaint, this, this afternoon, of somebody over on the south end of town, that's got six cars in their yard now, and they're all wrecked, or not wrecked, but they're not, they're not running, and so, that's another thing that he, is part of his job description, code enforcement. So, we've got a code enforcement that, that takes care of the city's code, not, not police stuff, but codes that, like the minimum standard that y'all just passed, that's his body right there, that covers most of the codes that he'll ever have to deal with, and that's why it's so important to get it passed, because we have so many of these ordinances out there that would say, the mayor and/or his designated person, in their opinion, can say, this is a dilapidated building, you know, that's, that's not a good ordinance, but one that spells it out, here's what it takes to be a dilapidated building, here's what it takes to have tall grass, here's how many cars you can have in your yard, and, and, you know, things like this, that's what's in the minimum standard order. So, you know, I could see, you know, animal control underneath the police department- So, you know, I could see, you know, animal control underneath the police department, with the code enforcement, we're gonna have to do something, you know, coordinate through the police department on continuing to do that job, which I guess is a very important part of the job. And I'm sure you guys have heard, too, that Greenwood is looking a lot better than it ever has before. Yard will be mowed, grass will be picked up, you know, cars not on the street and things like that. And that's a direct result of our code enforcement policy.
Well, and I guess, if moving over to the police department, is there gonna be animal control and code enforcement?
So, I think that's a proposal, but the thing that, uh, you know, I think that we need to understand is that a lot of those codes, uh, you know, uh, they need to be coordinated. When, if somebody calls me about a, a code violation, and some of, you know, with the, like, so with tall grass and things like that, uh, he needs to be able to respond to that and, and enforce that minimum standard code. You know, he's not gonna be out there stopping people from speeding or running red lights. He is, he's our eyes and ears throughout the city on the, everything from grand dispense to the buildings that are about falling down, or some poor renter out here that has a gas leak in her house and can't get the, uh, the land, uh, owner to fix it for him.
Well, I think you're right. I mean, you've talked to the standard standards level you have, you know, a good definition of minimum standards. And then we also have it in place where we, you know, do have an escalating, you know, uh, penalty with it, you know, so that I think it gives, gives it more teeth.
And, and that was like I'm saying, is, you know, if it's moved under the police department, then, you know, the planning department should have access, and, and we did when, uh, Chris, Chris was here. I'd say, Chris, we got a problem over here, and Chris would go take care of it. He was in the police department. And we need to reestablish that, that loop.
If you look, I mean, if you look at workload, it says the month of January, you had forty-six calls for reference animals. And seven, you got one more.
I'd say those seven enforcement calls could take him, you know, a, a week to start, to start to the finish with the code. You know, you're trying to find out the name of the property owner, are they gone? Who's the bank, who's the finance company? What's their address? And you talk, and you get a hold of them, and they pull the paper to somebody else. And in the meantime, the grass is growing, or there's a spray car in the truck. So, like I said, just saying, seven code enforcements, uh, you know, that, that sounds like very few, but it's time to say.
Sonny, I mean, I, I know that y'all's got plenty to do, but then I look at Donald's workload, he's got, y'all got seven permits in the month of January. So, I don't know, somehow it takes him to, he might, he might run multitask.
Oh, he's also, you know, the quad lane manager, and if you look at the, uh, inspection, uh, log, you know, when he tried a permit, that's not the last that he has to do with. He goes out there from, uh, you know, pouring the pudding up to the town, the thing-
I know that works.
They, they put it down, you know, but-
It don't, it don't take long to inspect the pudding, it don't take long to inspect the food. But, I, I, I've seen it, I've lived twenty-seven years. I'm just saying, that, that may be a situation where, where, because I think we were looking to give Donald a raise in that, in that budget, if I wasn't mistaken, you know, so, I mean, the workloads and stuff, I mean, to me, I mean, seven permits don't look, I guess, shoulder weight, but-
If they were to raise it there, I, I'd do it, but-
Well, my vision of the whole deal, way back when, was, we used to have two million inspectors, and I always thought that those guys would do code enforcement also. I just assumed that, well, I did, 'cause of building codes, I've always heard. And then if it got to zero hour, or there was smacking to be taken, that's when you call the police with the gun and say, I think your boys go over there and fix the dance and fix people, and so they show up, best bodyguard, or you wanna call it. I didn't, I didn't, that was my originally, on my first, you know, ten, or a year ago, when we started this building. That was when I was talking, it would make more sense than Arman, the guy, just, the inspectors would go around, has their spec in the house, or whatever, sugar, very, well, I see that a lot of here on the way through, and most, I'm assuming, they kind of just ease around town, know where the building is.
And to remember with the minimum standards, uh, ordinance, that if a code enforcement officer, uh, came up on a problem that, uh, had plumbing issues, uh, heating and air, gas, you know, electric and all that, that's when the, the building inspector would get involved with him, 'cause he's trained on that.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, if, if it came a fire, I, I had it, and Stewart would be accompanying him. That way, he doesn't, code enforcement officer can't, you know, can't help all these things on the code, you know, and put- so that, uh, they were, they were partnered up with different-
Chief, Brian, you have something?
I was, ten upon the, we're having the same issue on our department burning. I'm calling officers, the issue, ten officers has what he did wrong, I don't know all that stuff. You'll have to go to court and testify, but I didn't want to give him the ticket, I don't wanna do that. So, this summer, I'll be going through the reserve class enforcement. And so I'll be able to do all that enforcement, and look for other things, and all that, you guys, to adopt. But, uh, right now, every now and someone's burning illegally, I can't do anything about it. And the officer's like, I can't go testify, of course, I have to know the rules of those. I've got three, four, three volumes of fire code, or state fire code, then I've got international code, right? Or, and I've got, sort of, the fire safety code, there's two volumes and volumes. Same thing with the code enforcement officer, he has to do electrical, chemical, uh, building. He's got so much stuff, that's a whole different ballgame. The last thing he needs to do is go out and vote for dollars, I think, so, but-
He was proposing he'd look for dollars. He was proposing taking seven a month, code enforcement calls, which are ranging from truck tires in the yard to hunting stands in the yard. I know some of those calls are more complicated, but those are not particularly complicated. You go out and tell somebody, it shouldn't be time consuming to go to somebody-
Like I said, I, I certainly don't, don't mind this one.
Totally separate discipline and separate training.
I certainly don't mind this going under the police department. Mayor and I talked about this since, since day one. Uh, but I, I do think that there needs to be some coordination, so that we can work with that and, uh, be able to call up the code enforcement officers, say, we've got a problem here, and if you go look at it, and, uh, if you need, you know, building inspector, water, gas, fire, or whatever, then, then you've got the pack up there.
If you'll, thank you, Sonny, and I appreciate your comments. If you'll allow me the flexibility, I, I, you started this conversation out by going, by talking about being an administrator, and I appreciate that, so, and, and I would certainly take it upon that if you will work those details out. There's keys to be, to be worked out, certainly. Uh, I've got a picture in my mind after work, my mind's not always the same as everybody else's, obviously, but I, if you'll let us move forward with this, I, I think it can be a very successful move, and think will be, be worked out very well, whether they come by and, and, and check in with planning hours to be done. We'll, we'll get that, we can sit down and work that out, if that's, council gives us that flexibility.
I got a question, though. One of your officers can't write a citation per the authority of the fire chief?
Well, I don't testify to it.
If the fire chief's telling him he's in violation of code, he can't say-
That's how that's my-
I'm acting on the fire chief's-
He's not qualified to do that, to be, fire chief, that's who that is.
The fire chief, you can write, you know, like, if somebody's not at the code, you can go to your inspections, you can-
I don't have to pick any authority to city Greenwood, I've talked to you guys about it before, and we've had a discussion, but somebody doesn't, I, I didn't be right, too, and some, but, but some entities around here will probably get one with about sixteen violations in a row, and, uh, and because I told you, one day it's done, uh, and, anyway. But right now, no, I do not have to give authority.
Well, towards the fire code, I'm talking about city minimum standards, that are city laws, warranties.
The code enforcement law-
Yeah, I'm, is the police law right to pick it for that?
Code enforcement law, right?
Yeah, I law.
Again, I think that that's gonna be something that you're gonna have to, to be qualified to do that.
Well, I, okay, but, but like I said earlier, if a guy goes out and says you're gonna get a ticket, and he's got some muscle there in the side, I'm enjoying the scenery at the guy's front door. I, I mean, I, I don't mind the, the, I suppose, code enforcement guy going out and, you know, we're talking about tasers and handguns and stuff, and I trust the animal department, obviously, but, uh, you know, I, if a guy's multiple violations, we call, we call, we send a letter, it's ticket time. We go out there and inspector or code enforcement or department head, I mean, somebody oughta be qualified, but, you know, we're shorthanded.
We've been there before.
Yeah, you know, so, uh, I just feel like, I mean, it becomes a, to have a cop, you don't tag them on?
I mean, I know that, uh, he's gonna go to the reserve class, and he needs that to protect himself from, you know, aggressive animals. But I said this a while back, and I'm sitting here, that walking up to the door with your gun on your side and tell people the grass is too high out, I don't like that idea, but, uh, as long as the entities are together and we're doing that code enforcement, it just bothers me that we're walking up to tell them to move and unsightly mess with them on our side, uh, or let the grass be called in on our side. I mean, there were times-
Breaking the law, that's different now, walking up the same, you're breaking the law, but, uh, that, that's just my issue.
There was one time that I was walking to, what looked like a crack house, and knocked on the door, and I wished I had a gun on my side.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I thought, what am I doing?
Just have a guy with you. It's just like a parent dropping off a kid out there, the parents walk in, the police will come in from there and make sure things, you know, smooth.
Any more discussion? Thank you, Dylan. I don't think that you overdid it. Thank you. Uh, we'll move to department reports and questions from council. Uh, Will, would you like to play us off?
Mayor, council, I'm just gonna answer it. In January, we had a hundred and seventy-six warnings issued, seventy-six citations, had two hundred and eighty-three calls with nine accidents. All officers are required to have four hours of racial protest training and shape and clear this month. Other relations, we had the Greenwood Junior High career pair that Captain Wolford, Lieutenant Driscoll, Inspector Fugue, Detective Gere, participated in it. CID was issued twenty new paces, and they closed thirteen. And unfortunately, I think to tell those that aren't fire department, we had a car wreck, uh, a couple of weekends, three weekends ago, and, and they seem to have to be doubled. And, uh, it looks as if they're gonna give seventeen thousand for the twenty-six thousand something dollar car that, uh, paid for. So, once, I've got an animal today, but I'm trying to find out what's usable in the car that I've been using, the new car, see if, uh, if, how much of a difference it's gonna be to replace that vehicle. I don't know if y'all heard the story, I'm sure the firing that happened, I know, but, you know.
Go ahead.
Well, he, uh, started a call in the, uh, and it was late at night, I think almost midnight. It seemed like eleven o'clock, and I got a phone call. He's been disciplined for, for his driving, 'cause it was, uh, his own fault. There wasn't another call to it, other than he had a rider, was trying to seat around him, and turned the wheel too short.
What did the fire department do?
Well, they responded, so I know the council, and everyone in fire department knew about it.
Sometimes the chief of everybody, sometimes we, we, I'm just saying, we want to aggregate the, sort of, pocket.
Well, I got pictures, and I figured everybody would have liked it.
That is all I have, if you have any questions.
You got a office, you said you have a office space for more than a little, they just move back up through you?
Yes. No, no. No problem. Well, I'm here. Well, that's another thing, is I think, uh, we should have that now, we should have had that in there. And, uh, there should be a radio in the car for handhelds and shirt, probably, and test this, that sometimes it just don't work. And there's times I try to get on the cord, but I can't, I have to go back to my car. And I can hear them calling for me, and it just won't key up and get out. So I have to go back to my car radio, which tends to be able to get out. And I think they're running about five thousand dollars.
And it, there, while we're talking about it, what trouble here is, hey, they'll borrow what's the issue with the, the junky?
Well, uh, it tends to be when it's indoors in different places, metal buildings, uh, if you've seen, uh, firemen, I'm sure I've seen them. It's just the, uh, for some reason, that digital signal is, has difficulty here in a, like, a concrete building, that's a big concrete building, like, you're trouble getting, it just seems to be inside most time, troubles are. There's some dead spaces with the, the towers that don't allow us to get out, but, uh, it's just hard to solve with the mountains, I think. But specifically, I just don't think you can find a radio inside a metal building that has the capability to really get out. I think you should, unless the store had a feature in it.
And that is a problem, they'll analyze and look for it.
Mm-hmm. Well, we were forced to go to, uh, these radios. The county said you can either purchase the radios and talk to us, or talk to yourselves, so, we don't have dispatch, so, it's not much choice here.
I need a power here also, we can't, we're talking about that three years, with somebody being, uh, the closest tower, followed by Magazine Mountain, Better Hill, and, uh, other radio. And unfortunately, Greenwood, that's a little bit, so it wasn't like, like, that's all, I don't see where, uh, it came.
Again, everything that, for the code enforcement, animal control officer, everything's here except, uh, a phone in his desk? I mean, but I mean, I'll see, I'll see, uh, the radio, lights, cellphone, feel like everything's here except maybe the phone in his desk?
I'm not sure what's on there. I've had to put down supplies, and I, I mean, just like the new tranquilizer gun, it's between seventeen hundred, two thousand dollars, which he still has to do with that training. He has to complete another phase of training before he goes to that phase of training. But he's got a lot of training coming up that, that he needs to go to, and of course, he'll start participating in our training once he comes to reserve. There's, uh, there's quite a few items, I mean, all the equipment is, uh, from when I think we started animal control, really. And the, the tranquilizer gun hasn't worked properly, and I haven't seen anyone be successful to shoot it ever, since I've been here. And, uh, there's good times, surely he can use it to tranquilize some animals for the proper training. Uh, there's actually, uh, finger shoots out in that. I mean, every animal control officer's had the demo, he can't get close enough to, to snare, to the snare pole. Uh, that would certainly help. There's just a lot of tools out there for him to be able to utilize. Uh, you know, short of chasing a dog, same dog around for two weeks, trying to catch him, and hoping he doesn't bite, or bite somebody, but there's, there's some tools out there, and he needs, certainly, and if he loves it, in my eyes, I think he'll be able to, just be out profitable.
So, let me get a picture of one of the trucks. Current animal control code will be, uh, you carry a saw?
He would be at third July, sitting in the line. Class.
I'll, I'll leave you up there. I would want to give him that for a snare pole, so he also be-
Well, of course, Matt, I mean, that's who we go to to ask questions, of course, they're, they're straight down with control. Uh, that's for, I just have an issue with, I don't know, some people.
Well, but I mean, is, is he, is it gonna be your, his, gonna be his supervisor, correct?
Yes.
If you say, listen, when you're gonna go do code enforcement, then you got a lockbox in your glove compartment, walking to the door. If there's nothing that says he has to carry his saw on with him when he goes up, I mean, the grasses, that's discretionary. You're not, there's nothing that says he has to-
Well, I don't particularly want, I don't wanna do that, if it be the one house that he walks up to and they decide that they're gonna-
I mean, you just have to, if, if, if there's a chance of that, then he oughta be carrying it. When he goes up there, you oughta support him in that, if it's, you know what I'm saying, I mean?
For me, it's one of the others.
Yeah, I, I don't care. I don't care if you're-
I'll, I'll say, I'm a police officer, that's, that's the issue.
Yeah.
Nowadays, I'm not saying that, uh, this likelihood of it happening in Greenwood, but, uh, it might happen anywhere.
Grenade and AR fifteen.
More than, I'm not like-
Grenade and AR fifteen.
Yeah, I'll keep that in mind.
I support whatever you want to do.
What was the comment about dressed like a police officer, which way would you go with that?
Well, he's, I mean, he's, well, obviously, I mean, he has a badge, so, uh, you know, there's officers that are down there that are, that are Russian ice face, and they may see him as, as a police officer. I wouldn't, that's why they offer down, and then-
Yeah.
Right.
Well, we'd like to whip a little pencil and paper first, to open it up.
Thank you, Chief, and, next.
City sales and use tax is up point six percent this month over the same month last year. And county sales tax is up three point six percent this month over the last year. And Karen Rizley, the legislative audit, is going to be wrapping up hopefully this week with her onsite stuff. And then she'll continue with the reporting side of the audit for two thousand fourteen. Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Couple of things, in your package, you have a drawing, a conceptual drawing of the wayfinding signs. This is the final draft of what is proposed for our wayfinding signs. These will be spaced out from the two ends of Greenwood. Smaller ones on North Main and Coker. Some of these, we're not, not going to use all of these signs, or we're not proposing to use all these signs, just going to use the ones that we feel are necessary to get people around town. The one on the car ride, it's a kiosk, if we wanted to put one of those on somewhere around the square, it's good. Alma, Fort Smith, Van Durin, they've all signed off on the code. And, you know, if Alma, Alma's already budgeted thirty thousand dollars, they're budgeting for the signs. And I would, I would think we need to let them get ahead of us. But that's what they kind of look like. We've got some people working on now to give us an idea of what the cost of those signs will be. Once we get the cost, then I'll come back and we'll talk further. But I just want to let you see the final on this, you've seen it, Michael Johnson, Dick Park, and designing these. Also, you have a report from our planning, the commission and board adjustments. We had several applications for variance last time. One of them was approved. Also, under unfinished business, the school approached us about turning the Gary Street from Main Creek to the Rock Gym over to them and also Elementary Loop. And brought it from the planning commission and they turned it down because of the past history of the intersection at Coker, not Coker, at Daisy and Gary. And I went back and looked at the minutes and the council at that time approved the addition, that was back when I was doing the student union, and with no stipulations. So, there are no stipulations, and so I went back to the county commission and hold. You know, you can't use that because it's, it's been approved without stipulations. And so denied again, so that they could, until the school could meet with the planning commission on future plans of what the school district are going to do. So they're working in their, their future plan for the city. I talked to John Seachman, he said, there are no future plans. He said, before we build anything else, he said, I'll be long retired. And he says, as far as the streets go, we don't care one way or the other. He said, it's our street department that asked them if they would take over the streets. So, we're going around in circles on this thing and, like I said, they don't, they don't care whether we take that street over or not. The issue is if they put two speed bumps on the Gary Street between Main and, and the Rock Gym. And Joe was worried about the liability of, of the speed bumps.
They told me to do that.
Do I?
They told me.
They did, nobody did. That's, that's the issue.
They did it and then called afterwards. They did it and then called afterwards.
Why can't we go take them up?
Do I?
Why can't we go take them up?
We can.
Our street?
Or we can give them the street. Or we can give them the street and let them keep it up forever and ever.
And then the beauty, Sonny wouldn't, when they built the gym, it was when they closed Gary Street.
Yeah, it's true. And see, we, we gave them from the Rock Gym to Daisy Street, but the little piece from North Main to the Rock Gym, we retained. And I think it was, you know, just a, an error. I can imagine why we would want, you know, have to block the street and then that loop around that intersection. They had been.
I thought there was just news on that intersection there, Daisy and Gary.
There was, and the planning commission, they turned them down until they did the, the intersection as they agreed to earlier. And they came to the council, and the council at that time told them they could go ahead and build the student union and ask, or told the planning commission to issue the permits. And so that was why, how they went ahead and did it. But the council approved it with no stipulations. In other words, you can come back at a later date and say, okay, you got to, you know, you didn't do this, you got to do that. And so, that's a viewpoint. Now, the issue is, they're, they will take this street from Main to the Rock Gym, and they'll also take Elementary Loop. But, you know, the planning commission still thinks that they, they can hold, hold that intersection open when they can.
That wasn't in the minutes?
Yes. It was.
Actually, that's what this thing is.
That's what I did, I went back and looked at the minutes and it said the council approved it with no stipulations.
I thought, in the, because there was, Rod, were you on the council there?
Yeah. And you know.
We had one argument because we.
Well, you know, Rod and I come from the same length on this, I pushed for it, I was on the planning commission, I pushed for it, I pushed for it, and it was agreed on. Then they got ready to build it, and they came back and said, oh, wait a minute, that's going to cost more than what we thought. And I said, yeah, and if you wait till next year, it's going to cost even more. And so they, they appealed to the council, and the council said, y'all go ahead and do it, the planning commission give, the planning department will give you the permits, and we'll go on about our business. And we'll come back and review it at a future date as far as they partnership. Well, you know, it's kind of one of those gray areas, when's the future date? What partnership?
I think, you know, there are a few things I feel bad about, and that's number one. And, you know, I was impetuous, I think we were all impetuous, I think I was just following Daniel, I think they even made all the motions. Yeah, you know, Dr. Johnson called in and, and said, this is what we're doing, and we.
I have no idea what that's like.
Yeah, we felt it like a deck of cards.
I've never experienced.
Well, and if you read the minutes, well, I mean, we have been partners with the city.
This is Dr. Johnson Hadley, correct?
Yes. We've been good, good partner with the city, and they have, and, you know, here's what it is, this is going to cost more money than what we thought it was. Would you grant us this? You know, there's.
Forty-five thousand.
Probably forty. There's times where you should have done the right thing and I did the wrong thing, and if I'd done the right thing, Dr. Johnson Hadley would probably have me as much as Stewart. You know, Stewart stood up and did the right thing, and I did not, so.
But anyhow, that's where we are, and, and I've got a planning commission meeting coming up next Monday, and I know that, you know, the, the, the original request came from our street department to the school. And the school came to us, and we turned, and they, so we're turning it down our own street department, basically.
That was not a request from the street department, I don't know where that comes from, that was not a request.
That's what they, that's what John Seachman told me.
Well, here's, here's the request from this city council.
Okay.
We're quick, we're going around and around this deal. So y'all have planning commission meetings you want, but I'm saying right now, when March comes around, it's going to be on the agenda to give that loop and from the Rock Gym to Main to the school. And I don't care who says what or whatever, and I won't legally hold these boys up here, but it's fixing to get that, because I'm sick of getting calls from Greenwood High School saying, what are y'all doing down there? We were trying, we blow the block, and what kind of projects you got telling them, well, they don't have any idea until then, the numbers come out. I mean, it's a two-year cycle, every few years they get new students, they might have to build more, who knows?
And they just, you know, the next major project is probably in the Rock Hill there.
But, so my recommendation to the planning commission would be to approve granting this road, I'm sure the planning commission approved your grant roads, but anyway. Because we're going to hold on next month, whether y'all like it or not, or y'all say yay or nay, the planning committee, but I'm hoping it's going to, because there's no reason to. I mean, they, the speed bumps are very useful because kids drive like bats out of hell through there. Trust me, I've got three kids in that place, and they drive like maniacs, and there are probably some teachers as well.
I like what you're saying.
So, I mean, the speed bumps have a little problem with, I totally agree with Joe, I'm a lot of people to issue, kids take some drugs, it's speed bump a little bit here with our speed bump. Okay, so that's no problem, there's no reason for them not to own those roads, I have no idea why it's a drug this long, I just can't just. And I don't care about the intersection in ninety-five, ninety-six, I mean, yeah, it's terrible, to this day, it's still terrible. But the school is off the business of building roads, which is like J. Johnson Hadley said, they're teaching. So, that's, we messed up, so we're eating that. Now, before my time, I was a little whipper on the air college pump back then. But, I don't care what the council says, this thing's happening. There's no reason for them not to do it, to happen.
I don't know, but you said just out of any stipulation, so I mean, I think.
What stip, what was it?
What is it, they want to just block off the Elementary Loop?
But that, the German blocks off the street or missing lines? What's the difference?
It's only missing lines, it's not the whole time, it's not the whole time, it's only the missing lines.
It's not perfect. You think the elementary loop is a parking lot?
Yeah, that's what it is, it's a parking lot.
My problem with the whole deal is it ain't necessarily getting, giving them the streets off, it's just the way they go about doing things without asking.
That's right.
It's like, it's not, we don't really, we don't have to ask your permission for nothing, it's just like the speed bumps, you tend to drive, think of why, another old time, they probably need some. It's the principle of the matter of not asking.
Well, that's the way I understood, that's the way I understand it, which explains to me, they thought that it's already there because of the other thing. And like I said, I would almost agree with that, because I can't think of a good reason why the city would hold that.
The discussion was, it was kept that way so that the fire emergency vehicles could access the middle of the.
Yeah, but the, but the school paid for it.
They still have to keep it open.
They paid the security of that Gary Street, we did the work, but they paid for the materials to do that.
And I, I think, right, but it's still, even if we give the, the street to them, fire trucks need access to center that campus.
They can, but.
Now, we didn't have any enforcement, we didn't have any enforcement.
They're talking, because Archie wouldn't want to up there and make a way.
But now, the first thing I'm going to do is designate, let's designate fire lane. Because of the area.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you designate the street to them, for their property, they build the garage if they want to, if they want to, right?
I'd far like to.
It's our. I mean, I worry about the laws. The law is about that, that you got to build a good drive.
They have access.
But I'd like to be able to go to the planning commission Monday night and say to the council, once this, the two streets given to the city, get out.
Tell them to take it as.
All right.
Where it's still available.
If it's city property, wouldn't me be over that? Where do we got that? We got seven two.
We're going to have to pass orders to land and then anywhere.
Yeah, I, I don't know whether you've got the orders in there of the other part of it, you know, we, we have to have to get the legal description of those and, and make an order and stuff.
Where do we got the office on that?
I appreciate you supplying the minutes for the test, but the minutes that you supplied this time, I appreciate that, so.
Well, it's a lot easier than they.
No, myself, I do it myself.
Follows up on there, and that way it gives you a good graph of what's going on in the city.
No, I appreciate that, that's good.
Also, I need to, this is something really interesting. This is the latest grant from the highway department and the MPO.
Who's that?
It is God.
Does he play the drums?
This is, this is a real practice. They sent me one that had Greenwood. The improvements costing more than the twenty-nine river bridge.
Well, for a dollar, you give us two million for that.
All right, this is the latest project listing from the state highway department. And for the first time, you see I forty-nine and Bridge listed on it at the top. They figure that it's going to run at least a hundred and eighty-two million dollars to build a bridge. And then another hundred and eighty-two million dollars to get to it. And so, like I said, that's the first time I've seen a figure of it, I've heard everything from fifty million dollars on up. This is a hundred and eighty-two million, break it down per mile, the engineering costs, and that's two thousand fifteen figures. So that means this year it'll go up, and the next year it'll go up, and the next year it'll go up. And down at the bottom, you'll see S H ten, and S H ten is, that's Highway ten and Highway ten Spur. They have a cost figure of widening Highway ten, ten Spur. The first one is from Mount Harmony to Denver Street, and they're showing an estimated cost of fourteen million dollars. The second one is Denver Street West to Park Street, and that is six million, seven hundred thousand. And then Park Street seventy-one, another six million, two hundred thousand.
That's just the construction cost, that ain't count the fifteen percent engineering cost, correct?
The, yeah, the total cost is nineteen, that's a million, nine million, eight million.
Where are the dates?
Do I?
There's no dates?
They're supposed to be updating the dates, I, I think twenty twenty was it, but I want to get, get them to verify that. On the second page, you'll see, under Greenwood, Denver Street, this is a project coming from seventy-one to ten Spur. And that's widening the street, curbing gutter, you know, moving utilities and all that, that's another eight million. So, that's what we're looking at for highway improvements and road improvements to Greenwood from the highway department. We are on the list, and as they continue to knock off projects, we keep moving up.
And like I said, that's twenty fifteen costs, for the time. And is there any possibility if we, you know, do any kind of matching, if that would?
Yeah, there's always, always that, you know, working time, of course, you know, there'll be a match, but, but the match can be worked out as working time. Twenty percent of this figure, if we can do that, if our moving utilities, and things like that, then that thirty-six, satisfy our portion.
And is, you know, you said Denver Street was curbing gutter and moving utilities, is that the same way with Highway ten and ten Spur lines?
I'm not sure, of course, it's, you know, they're talking about widening, that, you know, this is, this is not considering a southern bypass, you know. We've always wished for southern bypass, and if we didn't southern bypass all that, this would be the alternative. Because, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't need this. We, from Highway ninety-six to the Highway seventy-one, we've become a city street, basically. Arkansas Highway, we go to southern bypass the Highway ten. So, you know, that's still a possibility, we have a spending at the highway department that they're supposedly brought back from the dead. Because it was put on hold because of a disagreement between a former mayor and the governor. And so, they have, they have refigurated it, so I don't know how long it's going to take to get, get out. But we, we did do a southern bypass study some years ago, and I'm sure, cost wise, it's going to be the same. But, again, those are probably two thousand and six numbers, and so we're going to have to come up with, they figured that, go back and re-figure the engineering and all that. Any questions on the, on the highway department?
Just stay and get, get licensed with them.
Punched up and save, save you dollars, because it's going.
We got any favors, so we'll give them.
Yes.
Sorry.
But, it, it, it's pretty interesting, like I said, I was really shocked at the highway and highway bridge cost.
Thank you, Sonny. Mr. Chad Graus.
Yes, sir.
Spotlight is on you, sir.
All right.
And you met Chad, but I'll do the official again, Chad is our new interim street department director.
Mayor, Councilman, Mr. Harry. My whole office report, last Friday, we had David Haydrich, the guy that sort of come down to do a class on hay. He's busy to come back over this month. come back over this month, and, uh, what we're gonna do is we'll take a machine here, we're gonna do some trial runs with the sand here. He said that's probably the most preferred and that before we go out and start doing it.
You say sand?
Use sand.
In the parking lot?
And, uh, we'll do that out there, and break the shot in the parking lot. So, it's something that we can put in a machine, it's something that's, I mean, it's not asphalt, but it's where they put rocks, something we can practice laying down and pick it back up. Uh, other matters, we had a citizen that lived, uh, lives up on Webster, kind of a job, said he's having difficulty seeing every approach, Denver Street, so we went up there and kind of, uh, shrubs and stuff, and did just clean it out, a lot of citizens think this is what it is. Uh, other matters, it's pretty much business as usual, just performing at home, whatever they do. Other than that, any questions?
Thanks, sir, appreciate it. Return to your, you're available for questions. If anybody have anything for us, or if, um, there you go, chief.
Mayor, Councilman, there, Mr. Chaney, the president's quit, thirty-sixth park response in January, uh, we are getting ready to kick off a lot of the training with this past month at Booker CPR, getting related data on that, and, uh, first now, we have one of the firefighters resign from the department, and right now, we're in the process of adding more firefighters. Had our physical agility testing this past Saturday, and that went very well, we'll get interviews next week, and so we should have a full list of, of new hires for you next month. Inspection requirements, Tractor Supply, had his final inspection this month, Greenwood freshman center, went through, did a walk through with Michael John on that, that goes to make sure all the DPC or all the connections are there, you know, don't know, this building's actually gonna have connections on the interior, where we can hook, uh, what's called a high-rise pack inside the building, and push water people, so you don't have to pull a hose all the way through the building, your truck, uh, the truck out there is gonna have hose, we have some of the posts, and so we built a stairwell on both sides, have a connection, it's pretty standard for most, uh, usual buildings, uh, it's kinda nice to have, that has, uh, that building, and then, um, the, the, the fire market center also has those connections, and, uh, so that's, uh, that's something that I'm excited for, we does have a full spread, it's also, it's gonna be a head of the building, I'm proud of the grand building, that's bullets, they'll, they'll get the feedback. Um, also, uh, let's see, Little Blessing preschool, inspection there, family view for David Allen, or Allen David project, and the Yino's project, uh, work on grants, the F D grant, they're applying to get from local training facilities, so we can get that physical equipment all the time, and then, uh, we've applied to the grant, uh, for some physical equipment. Our equipment, engine two is getting its new works divided actually today, uh, I hope you guys will be done four days a week, and extension equipment's been serviced, and then on station one addition, construction began last week, and estimated completion date's gonna be in August. I would, until you guys have come on that, but, uh, basically, I hope them, don't ask me any questions, they'll learn to change the rules if it's done, do you guys have any question for me?
I heard good comments about the trainings and folks that do it, of course, kind of have a bad respect for firemen, some of them are already firemen, just have to have a bad respect for, we used to make them work, and you didn't see what truly liked us.
It, uh, the physical agility testing that we do is exactly the same thing firemen require firefighters to do, to get their firefighter two to be certified now, and, uh, it's actually not as, uh, it was the new national standard that's coming through too, that, that we get our facility at some, except that, uh, there's a lot to that, and that's one of the reasons we're trying to get a practice of this, this equipment's with our guys, and probably on the partner side, especially our older guys, pull the better shape, so, we, we don't need to do that. Also, I guess, I don't know if you guys saw the news, uh, last week with the firefighter, Arkansas field, uh, first responder call, and, uh, his chief's one of my, one of my friends, an officer on Fire Chiefs Association, but he, uh, apparently someone opened up from a seizure, he was in there as a first responder, and got shot. And so, shooting thing, it's, today's kind of where I might ask you guys for stuff, of us on that day, and the EMS, our old three vests is already wearing both of his vests, some of them, a few swears, or obviously it's an option, but, uh, protective equipment is seen through this name right now, it's in all versions and services, getting beds. But, uh, any other questions?
Thank you, Chief, appreciate it. Counselor Foreman?
Uh, I, I had something I, uh, I told Charlotte, I said, I'd ask her about the, uh, street department position being vacated, so I'd kinda like to have a conversation, but now that, that I've thought about it more, I think it's too premature, I don't think it's right right now, but, I, you know, I've always wanted to, uh, as we're growing, and you see the problems, I've always wanted to hire a civil engineer, uh, not just a civil engineer, one with a P E, one that can stand, and I'd ask, uh, I'd ask to handle some of our costs that we spent with, uh, Ron Brizzy and some of the others, to see if we could justify it, and I, I don't know, I think we're probably still too small to justify it. I thought about maybe hiring one, and maybe putting a manager, a lead guy in front of the street department, and allowing this civil engineer to kind of, you know, manage tasks, and maybe we could look for one that was heavily into drainage, uh, maybe, maybe partially into planning, I think maybe the better time to have the conversations, maybe upon Sonny's retirement, maybe we'd be big enough there where you could, uh, hire one that was heavily into planning and heavily into maybe drainage and streets, but, uh, I don't, you know, I was thinking about the cost, it'd probably take us sixty-five thousand to probably get somebody interested without, and even then, we might be looking at a, a college kid. So, I, I don't know, I didn't, I just, the more I thought about it, I just don't, uh, maybe we're not right yet, but, uh, someday, I would like to, I think, I hope you pay, uh, some of these engineers too much money, and if we could do some of that in-house, uh, somebody that was more, more, I mean, it just seems like some of these engineering firms that we hired are not really vested too much in, uh, concerned about the Greenwood interest, it seems like we're constantly going back over their problems, and you look back, we were on big checks. So, uh, Jones Street, I took a look, uh, there's several of them that, uh, I was kind of, thought that maybe we could use him to, uh, deal with a lot of easement situations, since y'all were kind of cool to my response on, uh, starting the legal department, and kind of having a, a legal assistant kind of deal with some of this stuff, that handy supply, to work over there two days a week. I'm gonna bring that back up next month, I'll, I'll discuss that a little bit further, and see if y'all maybe uh, would consider that. I'd still like, if you could separate it in two different situations, still would like to access some office space in there before it all disappears.
I would entertain that.
But that's all I had, I, you know, I, I think I'll bring it up later, you know, I just maybe, now may not be the right time, maybe the way we've got the street department organized, maybe I'll just leave it like that. That's all I had. Other than that, uh, Ms. Brooke Holland, uh, she did a, a power presentation over to the fire department, we're fixing to interview people, and she did very, she very, did a very professional job, very good job, so, uh, I'd see you. That's it, that's all I had.
I, uh, because I want to, you know, have, like we're bringing up the, uh, our planning policy one-on-one, or, or eleven, again, you know, let's see where, uh, uh, the issue with the, uh, credit cards and stuff, and I think, you know, I, I think when it was, uh, uh, originally passed, we're looking at, I think, previous mayors, and how they had kind of, uh, misused this stuff, but I think, you know, uh, Charlotte did her due diligence, and she reported to me, and I said I was, I was okay with that, you know, and so I'm just gonna investigate, and then Charlotte's, you know, again, provided, you know, a list of the, uh, of the misuse, and again, I think, you know, in some ways, they're small, except for, you know, one for the, you know, party place, but I think that, uh, you know, we need to look at that again, because hardly was a definition of what the public relations is. I think, you know, the mayor's credit card didn't use for public relations, and I think, you know, it's a reasonable expense, and, uh, I think public relations is to promote good bill, and, uh, I think that's, I think that's what we give the mayor of public relations budget, or to do that. Uh, the other one is, you know, I think that, you know, when I kind of looked at, you know, limiting, you know, I'll say maybe employees, you know, uh, as far as fuel and, and meals, but I think, you know, the mayor, uh, does go a little off course, it goes to municipal meetings and stuff, and I think, there again, if we say that, uh, it is for, uh, you know, basically for a per diem, you know, using a credit card for per diem, I think then it can be used for fuel and for, uh, meals. So I think that we need to come back and, you know, revisit that, as far as, uh, you know, the policy there, because I really wasn't, uh, again...
There's gotta be a perk to be the mayor of Greenwood, at least more, I totally agree with you.
Well, and I think we just made it, you know, really too, you know, too restrictive, you know, to, in, uh, in applications, you know, for the mayors and the mayor's shoes, and I think we need to revisit that.
Was it because of the mayor, or was it because of what the auditor said?
State law.
State law.
So, it wasn't, it wasn't particularly any change we made with respect to your, we sent you the position of mayor, it was more with respect to what the state law says, what the auditor recommended, and so I think that was more the issue, I don't think it has to do with either trust the mayor, not trust the mayor, it's more, are we gonna follow the recommendations of the state auditor?
Well, there again, I, I would believe, you know, and I know on the, on the county, that's, that's different, they can use it for, uh, for fuel and, uh, traveling expenses, and so, you know, I think, I just need to revisit that, stay out of there.
I'm opposed to paying, you know, given the mayor, traveling expenses and public relations expenses and all of those things, is how, you know, what's the paper trail to support those expenses? I just have to follow that, hope they're given to the auditor.
Well, you know, I think, you know, the mayor auditor, uh, yes, they have their, the rules and stuff, and all, they're off like the, uh, uh, Attorney General, they're, you know, an opinion, I think, you know, applies to, you know, each cities, uh, because I really haven't seen it in there, I guess, specifically, unless that's, you know, the auditor recommendation, you know, just to, you know, follow that. And so, I mean, I kind of look there in the statutes, to see where it says that, that this is a prohibited expense, and I can't, you know, anywhere around the state statutes for that. I think for me, as long as we're in line of the, what is, is per diem is, or a employee's per diem, I think that that's something that, uh, again, you know, with Tim Perry, you know, that, uh, that is a, the mayor's office should have some perks.
Well, we have sixteen thousand public relation material, laundry mayor's a thousand dollars, transportation mayor fifteen hundred. That puts in the general fund right now. You kind of a public relations, I didn't know. Now, I'm not sure if that's all just for the mayor's disposal, the sixteen thousand, or if that's for just the general, I don't know what that...
I kind of looked at it as the, as the mayor's. I guess it is, you know, it's in the general fund, and it could be used by our, you know, councilman as well, but I kind of used it, you know, mainly as the mayor's ones doing the, uh, interacting with municipal leagues, with our, our related players down there, a little off, and I'm thinking, you know, if he's in a situation where he feels he needs to pick up a meal...
Fire birch flags, banners, field trips, awards, how many, that's sixteen thousand.
Can I interject a little bit? Are you, they say, are you referring to the, the list of items that was on the policy, the broken policy procedure, the procedure that Charlotte gave you, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
In, in acknowledgement, and, and whatever you want to call it, of what you're referring to, and I appreciate what you're, what you're saying, but I think we're looking at two different things. I want, I want to explain that, because I've not had an opportunity to talk to the council at all regarding that issue. I certainly wasn't gonna call you, because I think we found out that's not the thing to do, uh, but, I don't mean that bad, I'm just saying we all learn. So, what I want to say to you as councilman, and the whole council, those items on that particular list, is, and there's no, uh, on my part, there was never any intent of those being per diem items, there's two meals, I believe, and I think there's two fuel costs on there, but I'm not saying, I don't have a massive problem.
Yes.
And, and Charlotte and I had a discussion about those, and I know she talked to all of you about it. There was never any intent in any of those being, for me to, uh, say to you or anybody else that those were intended for that, so, those were purely accidents, and that's, and that's all that is. And so, if you need more information, I'd be glad to give it to you. Those were accidents on my part, giving the wrong card, charging, I never, yes, I was on business on two of those occasions, absolutely, I didn't pursue any per diem issue, that's not, I didn't question that, and I didn't want to use that as an excuse. The Cardinal Party, or Party Place, I'm sorry, two different things, Party Place item, you have, I think, for a hundred and fifty dollars, or whatever it is, was my intent, certainly my intent, to use the card, the debit card, or debit card, that was it? Purchase card. At Party Place to purchase a costume, which we all know that I do those dress-up things for events, reading basketball, best of that sort of thing. After purchasing that item, I, I honestly got to thinking more about it, if I was to wear my back then a costume to a, uh, non-city function such as a birthday party, which I have, by the way, since then, because I got invited by a kid to school to do that, or the teacher invited me to do it, I thought, maybe that's pushing the envelope, but the old, that being a city, being public relations. So I paid, I, but I tended to do it that way, and then I changed my mind, and went ahead and bought it, paid for it. So, I don't want the council to think that, that what you're talking about, and again, I appreciate what you're doing and bringing it up, that that is to say, I want that to be per diem or public relations or anything else. There is certainly that disagreement, if you will, and Charlotte and I have certainly disagreed, and maybe continue to disagree, uh, on issues of public relations. Uh, the Attorney General gives many, many opinions on it, and I know, as I've heard other people, a lot smarter than I am, say, those are opinions. Uh, the auditors, or the people that, that I certainly hold, or they hold us accountable, and I think it's important for us to go by what they suggest. Do we have to? You get written up, we get written up every year for, for things as it is, I'm not saying that's a good thing, I'd like to see it audit with no brat, no anything, but I don't know if that's possible, I think that's kind of like, not sensitive, you know. Anyway, uh, just wanted to clear up that that's not, I, I didn't try to pass any of that off, and I'm still not trying to pass any of that off, if that's the right terminology for per diems or anything else. Or mistakes of mine, Charlotte did her diligence, due diligence, and making that official, and, and letting you know of those situations.
Okay, Mayor, so here, let me give you how to tell them.
Okay.
The Lieutenant Governor of Arkansas and Representative Steve Walback come to town, meet with you, you say, what state do you want to run to, to Peach Farm? Now, if you buy their meal, I'm trying to figure out, I guess, they're not some sort of, I mean, does that, does state law say you can't use that PR card, purchase card to buy the meal for a couple of, I mean, that, that's...
We can't do that, we just, we cannot do that.
So what's the card for?
Well, I mean, that scenario is, is treating individuals, you just can't do that for Article twelve of the state, in front of the book.
So these are only by pens and pencils?
The only way you can do that is if you're having a meeting, and it's a public meeting. This money has got to be used for public, citizens in the public has to be invited to it.
To Peach Farm.
But, employees, in the course of doing their job, per diem, yes, that's allowed, but it, it crosses into an ethics thing, when you're buying money, when you're buying things for other people to do, you just don't do that. I mean, I grasp that, I don't know, it's an opinion, but...
That, I was, that situation just came up, and I'm thinking, if Charlotte's paying us off, she's making good money as mayor, but I'm just saying, there should be a way, I, I just seem to think there should be a way to put on the city's dime in the paper together.
Outside of the few rules, I mean, those are things in the policy, but he did some mileage report, that's how it happened.
The, the debit, the debit, the purchase card policy that you, you, the council passed a month ago, where Aaron Womack's been, does specifically talk about meals and fuel, correct? So that's, that's why...
Those are prohibited purchases.
Yeah, that's why that report was given to you, and that's what I, those are the specifics I was talking about. But what you're talking about, I think does, and we have a attorney sitting here, uh, their opinions, and, and I'm not, and believe me, I, the only, here, here's the issue that Charlotte and I disagree, and I think it's okay to hear this a little bit, is that, for instance, and, and we buy t-shirts, cups, pans, balloons, things... cups, pans, balloons, things with city agreements, obviously stamped on it, in their public relation items. If I want to commemorate or congratulate a lady in Pink Bud, and this, this happened, and I'm only bringing it up because it's a specific thing that happened. It's a, it's a flower, it's a pot of flowers for a specific lady at Pink Bud. I think where I made my mistake, I gave it to the lady instead of giving it to Pink Bud. Because if you look at the, or not the ordinance, if you look at state statute and those sorts of things, it does refer, or the opinions, it certainly refers to individuals being the recipient of those.
Corporation is also included in memorable? That's why we can't be induced to do that.
Right, right, but I'm talking about, but we give those items that we buy, and I know we bind for public relations to individuals. To me, it's hard to distinguish that apart from giving a flower to somebody. But that's just my opinion, so.
I can't see technically that there's a difference in doing that and giving a plaque to somebody who, you know, in your first of the meeting.
I agree with you, that is only my opinion, not the whole, the lovely mayor's.
Wait, may I, can you make something line up in the budget for flowers and?
Well, those don't come up often, but you certainly have those occasions.
Obviously, it's a public relation to me, I mean, that's, we don't get a more public relation.
You got sixteen thousand of public relations. It has a list, this is what, including but not limited to. The things that they just say then? No fireworks, flags, Halloween candy?
It is all encompassed in under that line item, right? Broken is up in, and, but you're correct, that's where it's at. And again, this is not to air disagreements, although I think it's important for the council to know that we do disagree, and on occasion that happens, and I, you know, and I would love for you to weigh in anytime.
It says, Mayor, it says awards and other public relation material in that six, five, seven, fifty, or twenty-five hundred dollars, a lot of them, but I mean.
It also says field trips, I wonder how broad, I mean.
That taking the governor to pizza bar would be a field trip.
No, I'm like, that's children that come here.
Yeah, those are field trips coming, kids coming here.
Not you going.
Yeah, we, now I've taken a field trip.
In the first place, you want a bad man costume, it's probably a national night out.
It is.
That was a public relation.
Absolutely. I like you, but I made that choice myself, I did, I didn't, no one turned me down. I just got to thinking, my conscience, if you will, said, okay, Doug, you're gonna wear this to Bell Park later for a kid that's not city, I thought, I'll just buy it.
I said, you go to Podo, and you go over there to Podo, that's gotta really do anything. If you're doing it for schoolchildren here in Greenwood, I can still say that's promoting goodwill, and that's not the relations. And so I, again, I just see no problem with that.
It's a great area of the law, I've been doing this for twenty-seven years now. And I've had auditors come in and say, you cannot give Christmas bonuses to your employees, but if you do it this way, it's okay, you just call it a different thing, and you can do it. So the auditors, I don't agree with the mayors, and current general opinions are just that, watch the news tonight, and they had something, somebody speaking on there about current general opinions. It's opinion, worth the question, my opinion or your opinion?
Can I throw it in?
But the, but the auditors are the ones that are going to write us up, and they're gonna hold us accountable. So whatever the auditors delineate for us, we need to comply with as best we can. But like I said, over the years, I've had several others come in and say, you can't do it this way, but if you would have worked it that way, we could have done, we could have done that, and we'd accept it.
Put a less example, I think, maybe you're wrong, I think if I put down that I was wanting to give, donate a, a arrangement to Pink Bud as a, as a group, that, and then what did they do with it? It's their business, but maybe it leaves to one little lady that was turning a hundred.
The auditors have more teeth in state law than they used to. We can't just knowingly do something that's, that the auditors are writing us up for, like, I mean, you know.
Sure we can't.
No, I know you can't, because.
We're doing, right now with the, what we function business in, we have, we have the.
But they can come in and ask that we either go to mandatory classes, or we'd be removed from office.
Well, there are, there are items on there that we have been written up for me.
I know, but if we continue and we irritate the auditor.
Sure, I don't disagree with that, absolutely.
They've got, they.
They also are now required to turn their reports over to the prosecuting attorney's office. And very rarely, perhaps from some city cities I represent, I get a letter from the prosecutor's office to get a phone call, wanting to know what I know about this and what I know about that, so they can criminally pursue that.
But they almost do that to us over the voice tech then?
I have that, yeah, we actually make, I have this filed written response and explaining the situation, and they opt out to do that, but yeah, that's, that's getting, when I first started, twenty-something years ago, that was unheard of, but maybe you.
I'm sorry, what was that?
No, it's okay.
No, Richard?
Those laws.
If you would, and I know I don't have very good control later, but would you come up here?
Tim's scenario, where he's talking about public officials coming into town, they're prohibited from receiving those gifts also. So there's all kinds of laws that go both ways. The spirit of those laws was prohibiting someone, some small town mayor from lining the pockets of a state official and trying to get favors for that.
Okay, Tony Romo comes into town, he's going to visit, Tony Romo, the court caper is coming back. When he comes to town, the mayor's gonna take him out to lunch, and I mean, so we don't have to be a political, you know. I understand what the law's saying, Charlotte, I can.
How does, how does the city?
But I'm just saying, I don't want to eat Tony Romo's lunch. Right, I, I, exactly. Maybe I'll go and wait in the parks.
I'm getting it, getting it, giving, he's receiving something in.
With my wife, official.
Doesn't matter, but you're.
He is.
Giving him something with the expectation of receiving something from him.
You know, I would see, I would see that, yes, if we said, yeah, then bring your car over here in the street department, wheel, tighten, put the wheels on and everything like that, you know. But I mean, for a, again, for a meal, again, I just did, again, that is just promoting good will. And I don't see where that, you're lining anybody's pockets for buying them meals.
Well, if it's a government official, it's a big problem, because he has control over funds to come back into the city and stuff, and that's, that's where you start getting, it gets ugly.
And as a check writer, I mean, you know, all I can do, you know, I've seen in my experience, I've worked with the auditors for nearly eighteen years now in April of '08. And I feel like I know what I'm doing when it comes to that, and I'm not trying to be grouchy, I'm not trying to withhold, I'm not trying to hold anyone back. But me personally, signing a check, I don't feel technically that that law is right. I'm gonna do it.
No, I have, I have no issue with you all doing what you.
We got three others, they're on our check.
I'm just saying that it just seems like there should be a way that he should be able to do that, funds or whatever, we, you know, this, we're all aware of.
You're welcome to ask that, or you're just like a lot of nasty men, don't say you know, I'm pretty sure.
I can have a request, because I probably use that card a lot more than documented. I feel about the frames for certificates, and the paper for the proclamations, and eventually against policy for me to be using this card. So I feel that it's, it's more needed for this assistant to have a card than it is for her.
That's local policy, we can fix that.
Okay, well, I was denied one, so I just, I just feel that moving forward, that's the person that's a holder in that office, and making sure I'm right about that and everything else.
Well, we can fix that, so I don't think anybody's opposed to that.
Well, it looks like, for me, about the policy of the American, is.
We're asking that if we keep bringing up giving to one, this one specific group, we can't do that. If I misunderstood that, I would let, we can't just give money to one specific group.
No, it's a procedural.
You couldn't give flowers to the lady, but you could give flowers to Pink Bud.
I mean, I would love.
Because that's a third corporation, for private corporation, you don't want a private, the two-day marriage.
There's a lot of places where you do business expenses, you don't get a card, if this is your card for business expenses. You use your card, and then you turn in receipts, and you reimburse for these expenses, and all that gets tracked. So I don't know that you want to issue a special city card for the mayor's assistant to go buy stuff. You just go buy stuff, and then you get reimbursed, and that's part of how your job works.
But you're not gonna get reimbursed.
Well, you should, I don't see why you would.
Same reason she's stating that she, and I'm not, it's not against Charlotte, it's, it would be for the same reason that you're not gonna get.
Well, no, I'm talking about the paper, and the frames, and that. And for that matter, I'm taking a trip to Little Rock, and I'm gonna do my per diem, and I'm gonna eat my McDonald's on the way to Little Rock, and we should reimburse it for. You do that on your card, you save your receipt, you turn it in, and you reimburse it.
But the whole point of the purchase, I mean, what kind of, the purchase cards were a, a.
For payment.
Well, it was making it convenient, I mean, there was.
I mean, I see, it's like, I travel a ton, and I have to turn in business expenses, and it's a pain in the butt.
But not everybody can pay it, I'm just telling you, there are instances where Brooke Holland or Tammy can't use their money, and they don't have money to buy something.
Are they constantly buying your frames or feeding my children?
No, I'm not talking.
And those are small items. I'm talking, the purchase cards were originally put in the apartment heads' hands, so they would have the opportunity to get what they needed. If Sturridge, the chief of enforcement, and needed three hundred dollars worth of something, I mean, that's tough for a guy that's.
I guess, yeah, I guess I'm just thinking about what we use to purchase cards.
It was in those instances where a city can't, that a vendor won't tag a P. A. That's the instance that the purchase card was supposed to have, what did he say? But they shouldn't be used all the time, or just anything, to avoid normal processes, it's so sad.
I think that saying it's a duty to avoid is unfair, I think it's just, it's their habit, and if they need that item, there's no, there's no, I don't think there's malice on anybody avoiding the process. I mean, that's just my opinion.
Well, that's what I've seen, is that if it's, if it's a reimbursable item, you know, to me, it's like you should be able to put it on the purchase card, I mean, because both of them bring your paper trail.
That's exactly what I was about to bring up for you, that is my exact thing. If you're gonna, if it's gonna be a per diem, or if it's gonna be on the purchase card, you're gonna save the receipt, you're gonna turn it in, same difference, you have a per diem, you got a purchase card. Purchase is what you need, instead of having to grab a check, or get a, get a check reimbursed, or save your own receipts, put it on the card, turn your receipts, or it's, it's all the same paper trail, what's the difference? And I'm not being a smart aleck, I'm just asking the question, I mean, I don't see the difference here. So somebody needs to explain this to me.
We're certainly not, thank, we're not gonna fix the differences of opinions on public relation items. No, I mean, it's just, that's not gonna happen. And I think it's important, and believe me, I am not in this position to do anything that riles or affects our audit. I mean, I had said all along, if we can get a perfect audit, audit would be great. I don't know that there is, I don't know that that exists. We do continue to do some things, and I'm not trying to point those out, because I don't remember what they are, to be honest with you, but there are certain things, and what is the separation, all that stuff, I don't know. We're not, and they say, as they're telling us, here you are, we're writing it again, and I understand that you can't afford to not do that, meaning we can't afford to hire more people. And there may be some other things, so there's no intent of doing that. I appreciate the whole policy, I don't know that it's perfect, and I will apologize publicly for causing an issue with it. I'm the one that asked for a card, and I started, I did that, and that was not my intent. And I'm all about whoever, and it happens to be Tammy now, my, my, my assistant, or my position having that card and not myself, I don't, I don't need that card.
I'll just, I'll just give my question and answer that.
I can answer that for you, I can try to answer that for you, because I know, that's a good question.
I mean, I mean, if, if one.
And the rub is in mixing purchases that we find out are against the policy, say. So you already did, or done, you know, you're gonna ask that person to reimburse the city for what they shouldn't have bought, against the policy, not opinion, against the policy. Well, that makes the person, you know, what if they refuse to pay? If we got this debt out there with Regent's Bank, that's already happened, we're not paying them. The purchase already happened, the person's already encumbered the city to do something that is not ethically right, or whatever, we have to make a payment. Maybe we get written up, maybe we don't. Now, when it's, when it's a reimbursement type situation, and they bring the receipt, and they say, no, we can't pay you back for such, because the city doesn't do that. Then we, we don't have, we put in the position of going ahead and paying for it, you see what I mean? Purchase cards make it happen before you can even ever say no, or whatever, when it's not appropriate.
Well, I guess you're right, but I'm just thinking if there was a situation like that, and employees did not want to pay it up, and I'm thinking, well, that's, yeah, let's call the department. I said, is your job more important than, you know, not paying this twelve dollars and fifty-five cents? You know, and so be it.
We'll do it. I don't believe this, but also, when you get a purchase card, if I go, if I take my debit card to Walmart, and I spend a hundred fifty dollars at Walmart, if I don't have an itemized receipt with that, all that shows up on my debit card is a hundred dollars spent at Walmart, a hundred fifty dollars at Walmart. It didn't say it was spent on paper supplies, and paper clips, and tape, and bubble gum, it just says a hundred fifty dollars at Walmart. So there's no way to look at that purchase card receipt and get an itemized line of what was spent at whatever store you want to spend it at. At least on my debit card, that's the way it works, but I don't have to say the purchase card.
On ours, we have, we have to turn in the receipt for the.
She was saying, the paper trail doesn't get you created, you still have to do extra work. The paper trail doesn't get you created, just buy the purchase, have the purchase card, you're gonna have to do this extra work, you just have the purchase card to remember buy stuff, it doesn't necessarily create that kind of trail.
So you know, and Charlotte already knows, and I don't know that anyone knows, that there was a purchase made on that debit card the day after this became an issue, and rightly so. She brought it up, and no harm to that whatsoever, but I appreciate the way she did it, the way it was handled. But there was another purchase made the very next day, and it was very much intended to be public relations. It was a gift bag for a, and I haven't turned it in yet, so anyway, for a door prize that had a focus on Greenwood meeting. And there was no intent of going around or doing it that way so you can get away with it. It was, to me, that was public relations as much as it can get, because it's a gift bag, not intended for any particular person, because it's a door prize, so why is it drawn for, so? How that's gonna be.
It's also for an organization that you pay dues to, it's personal.
No, no, the people, ever, anybody's invited, it's a public meeting, and you don't have to be a member of the door prize.
But are you?
Am I? Yeah.
That's just the spirit of, I mean, that's, that's part of the spirit of the law.
The city supplied the door, I'm, but again, opinion, that's.
Send city money on giving things away, so you know.
We spend money on things that we give away, t-shirts, what's the difference?
Because I have city agreement on the public relations, purchase the, the normal way, the city green.
What is the normal way of buying public relations items?
And not going down and buying a ring, or a bunch of towels, or a.
Doesn't matter what it is, if it, are you saying, and I'm just asking, if it's to the public, is it a public relation item only because it has a stamp of Greenwood on it?
That's what auditors consider a public relation item, yes.
I'll ask that question for sure, because if I wrote a city agreement on that bag, and I've been.
But I will say, if there's a letterhead or a card on there, it's.
It was a t-shirt in the bag with city green on it.
I'm really just not gonna try to make any others, so please call the auditors yourself and let them.
I'm only doing the Charlotte area, so everybody, you know, our disagreement, and again, I'll, I'll not use that until we get further, I'm not gonna use it off, I can't, but we'll not.
And if you need it.
Well, I think, that's the other thing I was wondering, I mean, we make policies, you know, because, you know, and we try to do it the best we can, you know, but now, just now that, you know, the policy needs to be, I think needs to be reviewed again, or revised some line, so that's all that I'm saying there. I'm giving, I guess, I appreciate Charlotte doing her due diligence, because that's, she was following the policy. And so I would say now that, you know, the policy needs to be reviewed again, and, because of one, I think that it's kind of like we do with Shadow Lake, so you're gonna come into the city of a reasonable amount of time. That's vague, and so we've been in here in the policy, we didn't say, you know, what kind of, you know, when the card's starting to be, you know, revoked, you know, what, what, I'm out of time. You know, and so Charlotte, you know, she just, you know, you know, she didn't have really any time, you know, to transfer it on there, so she's just following, you know, the policy. So I think, you know, we need to put in there, you know, kind of time limits or whatever, that you, you know, you get the card back for having any discretion, that's a lot of things.
All we can do, just bump up his public relations line item budget. I don't know how that money for fireworks gets brought out of the coffers, and the check cut, or whoever, but the public relations out of the general fund, if we're wanting to buy something for a door prize, and have somebody else have to buy it, that's not a member of whatever, I mean, I don't see how spending line of budget money is gonna be at the auditors.
If y'all have a line in the budget that states that, I will sign a check, because if y'all, y'all got it in the budget.
Well, those are public relations, the party rules.
No, no, not for those.
The wars is not.
Yeah, it's in that ethics part, and it's.
I'm asking if the wars in the budget is not. It says the poll.
Awards and other public relations.
Charlotte told me plaques that set up to a hundred fifty dollars per flag, per thing. So if you order that, and if they don't, I can buy one, I can watch for somebody, but if you get a.
So, if you go over that, and I don't want to buy a nice watch for somebody, but if you give an award for somebody for five, five a year, off shirt, whatever, and it's seventy bucks, that's okay, so.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, for a hundred year old, you can say the award, just has to be in the shape of a flower arrangement.
I mean, I think you're splitting hairs.
Yes, you are.
But, I mean, if it's, if it's wrong to give the old lady a bags of flowers, then it's wrong to give a fireman a plaque. I mean, it's an individual, both are individuals, and I, I don't know the answer to that.
What does an employee, the city, they want for the state?
It earns you a.
It's a talent, yeah.
Got a slack, I mean.
We don't go to pay and tell the people we're not paying services.
If one's wrong, the other. They could read to the relationship. I don't think either one of them, but, I mean, you gotta be careful, obviously.
Sure.
I mean, Richard had a very valid point about that.
The fact to give a Christmas bonus, that's illegal, but you give an appreciation bonus, and it's okay.
Well, I think the difference is the fact that the flowers and stuff are blocked on this card we're talking about, whereas the plaques probably aren't blocked off of that purchase card. I think the purchase card is the very.
Actually, the card, that, that's history, the flower was not on, that's not on this, that's.
I'm just saying, we're having issues with using the card, not with giving out a plaque, because it's not some P. R. S.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Say it.
I can work there.